Good evening and welcome to our regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, will you take role please?
Yes, thank you. Councilman Barnett?
Present.
Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Protan Mills?
Present.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Present. At this time, if I can ask everyone to silence their cell phones, I would appreciate that. And I would like to ask Major Jay from the Villa Park High School to recite our pledge. And he has brought some of his wonderful students that are going to surprise us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I'm graduating early and only because there's a music program. Would you please rise and join me in the flag. And ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
(inaudible) I've never done that in my life.
Oh, say can you see my love's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was absolutely spectacular. Thank you very, very much. Major Jay, if you would like to come tell us about the car show?
Yes.
And how that benefits the school.
Our 13th annual car show here in Villa Park is free to all spectators. We'll have, I think, up to about 140 cars this year from Vinti, Hot Rods, and some other issues out there. Please come on out and support the instrument music program. On May 9th, it could be in 30 other states if your mom happens to eat the hot rod. And if not, she shouldn't, right? So we look forward to seeing you there on May 9th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chuck, are you going to be coming to Pendleton this year or?
For Turkey Day? Wouldn't miss it.
Okay. I figured just in case I didn't see you again, I'd prep for it.
No, absolutely. I got 20-year history down there, you know, so it's kind of like going home.
Alright, thanks.
Okay. Our first presentation today is an update from the Orange County Fire Authority.
Well, unfortunately, Battalion 3, who normally covers Villa Park, got called out to a vegetation fire, ironically being wildfire awareness week. So I got called in, but it's unfortunate because we're already chasing wildfires and it's timely that this is a wildfire awareness week. I do not have specific numbers for you, but it has been a relatively quiet week in the city of Villa Park with no outstanding events. And would you like me to make the announcements on wildfire awareness week?
That would be wonderful. We are also giving a proclamation to wildfire awareness week and we are presenting that to the Orange County Fire Authority. And so if you'd like to tell us a little bit about what that is and how we can prevent wildfires, that would be great.
Yes. It's just, it's an awareness for the public and it's particularly timely this year and the prior two years, but we've been in an ongoing drought, as we all know. The fuels are already cured, which means they're ready to burn. They're beyond their typical drying phase. So the wildfire awareness is extremely important, especially in a year like this. I wish that the hills and our water supply looked like that picture back there, but unfortunately, they don't. So we would just like to get the word out to the public to be very careful and be very aware, especially when they're outdoors and any kind of environment where any accidental ignition can start a wildfire.
Okay. It also is a drowning prevention awareness month, am I correct?
Yes.
Or actually, it's a season is what that is. And drowning is the leading cause of death and disability, from what I understand, for children under the five years of age.
Yes.
If you can give us some tips on how we can avoid that, that would be wonderful.
Certainly. It's that, once again, timely. We unfortunately do have an increase in drowning occurrences and emergency responses to near drownings when the weather starts warming up, as you can tell it is right now. To keep it simple, we bring it down to what we call the ABCs. And the A would be adult supervision of children in or near the water. B would be barriers, which would be fencing and gates near your pool area. And C would be classes, which would entail CPR classes for the adults in case they do have an unfortunate event. And swimming classes for the children to avoid the event in the first place.
Wonderful. Any questions, counsel? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Appreciate that. Our next report is from Lieutenant Gunso on law enforcement.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. For the month of March, we have a total of six Part 1 crimes. There's actually eight, but we took out the two high school crimes, as we mentioned prior. So if you have the stats in front of you, it may show eight, but it's actually six. Because one of the thefts, petty thefts, was from the Villa Park High School of an unsecured bicycle. And a second one was a PE locker with a broken lock that couldn't be secured. And in that one, it was an iPhone and cash, so $135 value. So those two being taken out, we have a total of six. With the six, for the residential burglaries, we have four of them. And one of them, I'll just go over basics of them. One of them, the victim left the master bedroom window open, but the screen closed. Someone took the screen off and entered the open window. Another one was a locked rear door and they believe they have a known suspect on that one that's a relative. One that's interesting in here that was a considered residential burglary. The home was up for sale and the victim was not home at the time that the real estate agent was doing an open house. When they came home, the victim found her wedding ring was missing. So just to be aware, during open houses, you know, me, I would keep things either with me or locked in a safe place because what thieves do is they'll split up into pairs. If there's two of them, one will go one way, one will go another, knowing the real estate agent can't watch both of them. And they generally do something like that, walk up with something easy in their pocket. So other than that, those are the details. What I wanted to talk about also, what the Sheriff's Department is hosting a marijuana summit on June 5th over at, it's near our academy, at the Rescue Mission in Tustin. I'll leave this with Jared, but it's something they do every year. And they have experts in the field that discuss the pros and cons. In fact, we've got advocates for it. A doctor in here that's a co-founder of Smart Sam. Sam approaches the marijuana, read for sanity and what to know about marijuana. Another gentleman from Colorado, legalization of marijuana. And then judges and doctors, one of the doctors from Mission Hospital speaks on the subject every year. So that's coming up on June 5th and you were all invited to go if you have that day specifically. So, any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, can I see the attorney give us a report on the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session pursuant to government code sections 54956.92 and 54957. No reportable action was taken.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Some general announcements that concern the entire city. We want to make sure that everyone is aware that we have a senior mobility transportation program. It is working very well. We have heard a lot of positive comments on it. If you haven't signed up for it, if you're the age of 60 and live in the city of Villa Park and you want to sign up for a free taxi service to take you to dinner, take you to your doctors, come into the city, fill out an application, that's all it is, and you'll be able to use a taxi service when you need to use it. We have funds available still for that. Our firework application, firework selling application period is almost over. It's over on April 30th. We have received a few. It will be going to a lottery for some of the booths. And I believe that lottery is going to take place on May 12th at 6:30 at our budget study session. So also, we have our picnic for the foundation coming up on the 24th of May, and that's over at Irvine Park. Serrano Water Board would like me to remind you that we are in drought. If you live in the city of Villa Park, we have to reduce our water consumption by 36% based on your 2013 year. They will be having a town hall meeting sometime in the near future. They are trying to finalize that date and you'll be notified from Serrano Water. And once they let us know, we'll notify you on the Enet also. And at that time, they will be describing to you how we should need to conserve, how you're going to be penalized if we don't conserve, and what the ratifications are. And that would be the end of the general announcements when it comes to the city and council members will have their own personal announcements at the end. So at this time, we are going to go to public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to come speak about any item that is not on the agenda, please step forward at this time. If it's on the agenda, you'll be able to speak at the time when it comes up. But if there's any other comments that you'd like to make regarding anything else, please step forward. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. Alright, so we'll close the public comment section and we're going to go to public hearings. Item number three, we're going to waive readings and full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda.
So move?
Second.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Protan, or Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes. Alright, our first item is item number four, conditional use permit request at 17859 Santiago Boulevard to reinstate the use of a telecommunications facility, previous CUP 629. And this is an item that was continued from March 24th as well as from March 17th.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'll keep my comments brief in the interest of time. This application, as you noted, Madam Mayor, was before City Council at the March 17th meeting when it was voted to continue the item to this meeting to allow the applicant additional time to submit application information that would aid the City Council in their decision on the application. Since that last meeting, the applicant prepared and submitted photo sims, photo simulation photographs that depicts what the monopine would look like with new branches, which would improve the aesthetic appearance of the facility. Additionally, there were propagation maps that graphically shows the improvement in coverage and signal strength as a result of the proposed modification, which is to replace nine outdated antenna panels with three 4G long-term evolution or LTE panels or antennas. And so that concludes my brief presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up public comment and if Mr. Sandoval would like to come to the podium.
Madam Mayor, I'm also the applicant for this. Madam Mayor, good evening. Council members, city staff, thank you for having us. As stated in the conditional use permit.
Do we have a microphone for him?
The volume mic should be on.
Yes, it's on.
Can you hear me and turn up the PA system, Angel?
Is that better?
Can all the folks in the back here too?
Could you start over so we can?
Oh, sure. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. The city staff as well. Good evening. As stated in the conditional use permit application, it was for the existing monopine to be retrofitted with new aesthetic branches and also to remove the existing nine panels that are on there, which are outdated, and to replace them with three newer technology panels, which would help alleviate and address the structural concerns that were brought up. This would also increase the signal strength or the signal as shown on the propagation maps that were provided to you, as well as the statistics there shown on the photo simulations there. And as far as AT&amp;T is concerned, they just want the opportunity to do that to help the local residents and the emergency services that would be able to take advantage of that connection in case of any emergency where there's down power or anything that would be able to require the additional coverage.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jared, could you turn up the volume on that?
The speakers are facing towards the rear of the room. We'll actually have to stop the speakers facing towards the front of the room now. Volume will hear that feedback, which we. Right now.
Okay.
Okay.
On cue.
Alright. So, public comment is closed on this item and I'll bring it back to council. In discussion?
I think we spent enough time on this item, so I'm going to move that we approve the CUP.
Chuck it.
We have some additional conditions that we wanted to be put into the CUP and Megan, I think you need to address those.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Counsel, I would propose that under special conditions, we would add number eight, that AT&amp;T shall not be authorized to operate a monopine or otherwise, or other wireless facility on the B of A property without obtaining a conditional use permit from the city. And specifically waives any rights under CUP 751. And number nine, in compliance with AT&amp;T's application, the existing monopine shall operate for specifically the items noted in their application, which are the three antennas on the existing monopine, remove and replace the existing TMA's and so on. We would copy the language from the application. And in addition, on the resolution itself, the resolution states that now therefore be resolved that the Villa Park City Council does hereby adopt Resolution Number 2015-3314, approving conditional use permit number 760. We would, I'd recommend adding, be it further resolved that all recitals are incorporated here and by this reference. Do you have any questions on those conditions, counsel? If, I recommend that we just clarify with the applicant that the proposed conditions are acceptable to him.
Is the applicant still here?
The applicant was here.
Yes, we're in agreement.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
Yes.
First, we have a first amendment.
I made the motion. Motion including the changes.
Yes. So second.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
The motion carries, 5-0.
Item number five, conditional use permit number 2015-01, a permit to operate a large family daycare within the R1 zoning district at the location of 10705 Providence Drive.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you this evening for your consideration is a conditional use permit application to allow the operation of a large family daycare facility from a residence located at 10705 Providence Drive in the R1 zoning district. At the present time, the property owner, Mr. Bowie, is licensed by the state of California to operate a small family daycare facility to provide care for a maximum of eight children. Mr. Bowie and his wife are currently providing care for four infants, which is the max. And infants are defined as newborn to two years of age, and this is allowed under the state license that he has currently. It's also important to note that the small family daycare facilities are governed by the state of California, Department of Social Services, and cities are preempted to review these types of facilities. Mr. Bowie now is requesting approval to operate a large family daycare facility, and if approved would allow, would be allowed to care for up to 14 children. The residence itself is a two-story home, and the daycare activities will be limited to the first floor in the family room. There's also a room designated for childcare, as shown in attachment seven of your staff report. In his letter of justification, he provided that the business will operate from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week, and will be closed on all major federal holidays. And I'll circle back on this issue in a bit. For this application, public hearing notices were posted and mailed out to residents within 300 feet of this property 10 days before this meeting. And as noted in the staff reports, city staff met with a neighboring resident, actually a next-door neighbor of Mr. Bowie, who expressed concerns about the noise that's generated by the children when they're outside in the backyard playing. Also, city staff received calls and emails from residents who were concerned that the large family daycare would further increase the traffic along Providence Drive. You should all have a copy of these emails in front of you. Since the public hearing notices were mailed out, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Bowie and explain to him that some of the comments that I received included a resident saying, you know, or suggesting or recommending that the days and hours of operation be limited to five days a week, Monday through Friday, and limiting the hours of operation from seven to five. Mr. Bowie was in agreement with this and is reflected in the conditions of approval as part of the resolution. That concludes my brief overview of this application. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. And the applicant, I believe, was stepping up to the podium when I started my presentation, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions from you. When you increase from eight, or six to eight, to 14, you have different requirements from the state. I looked it up. There are, you have to have a different number of employees based on whether you have two infants, five infants, six infants, this goes to age 12. When you've got 14 children, how many employees are we looking at? If they're all 12-year-olds, I believe you only need one employee, but if they're infants, how many employees? Because that adds to the parking.
My understanding and my brief look at the, the state requirements is that you would need to have one assistant. Mr. Bowie alluded to that when we met, that he would, if the application is approved, that he would be hiring a part-time assistance, assistant to assist with the day-to-day activities.
Okay. Right now, with the, with the family daycare facility that's there, we don't have, we can't regulate that. That, they are allowed to have that by right, because I spoke with several of the neighbors, and they didn't know one was even existed there. So why, is it because it's going to 14 that we can regulate it at this point?
Yeah, it is-
Just to clarify, you know, how we didn't know.
Through the conditional use permit process.
Okay. Do you have any questions with him?
I kind of have the same question. The state purports to regulate this and kind of leave us out of the loop. What control do we really have? Is it just, is it just traffic and general ordinance compliance? And if so, why, what's the real purpose for the CUP? What's the, what's the basic needs of the CUP?
Well, as an example, you could, you could regulate the, the days and hours of operation. I mean, that's, that's the major thing with, you know, family daycare facilities. So through the conditional use permit, you can do that. Once, if, if the conditional use permit is approved, then the next step for the applicant to pursue would be a state license. But until such time that the city council takes action on an application like this, they, you know, they can't move forward, basically.
So what is it that he actually needs the CUP for, as opposed to just doing this? What is it that's constraining him that he needs the CUP for?
It goes from a family daycare to more of a commercial daycare, and that's really-
But we don't have the ability to prohibit that.
We do, we do. When it goes to 14, the city does. So he needs us.
Okay. So we actually do have discretion to approve that?
Correct. Yeah, I looked it up. If the applicant's here-
Yes.
Can we have the applicant explain a little more to us prior to opening public comment? Hi, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And your name, sir?
Ian. My name is Ian.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet you. Okay, what are your question, please?
Right now, you operate a facility with six children, correct?
Yes.
And, and we don't, we can't do anything about that. We're just trying to get an idea of, you want to go to 14, you might need some staff, you might need some additional parking. We have received several letters from residents and phone calls concerned, so we would just like to hear you tell us what-
Okay, understand.
You know, tell us your story.
Okay, the first small license, like what we have now, maximum we have only four infants. That's what we have right now. I can have more. I cannot have more than four infants. If I want to get more kids, so I have to reduce the infant from four, I go down to three infants, then I can accept more toddler. So from three infants, I can accept more toddler, three more toddler, and we have six. And then if, if I reduce one more infant, only two infants, so I can add six more toddler. So that maximum I have eight. That what is the way to go. Now, actually, all the four kids I have now, the parent, one of them have two infants in my home right now. One of them will be close to two years old. And I, of course, I request you know, we want both of the kids stay with you since three months until now he's 19. So he grow up up to two, and then you have four infants. And my, my son will be out there because he's, he's over capacity. So we, okay, then group a parent like that. So we request the last license to accept more toddler. Okay, with, with the last license, with the four kid, four infant maximum, it can add more a toddler, and then a total of 12. That the four the toddler mean from two years old up to six, and two more school age, that means six to 10. So maximum about 14 head count. But actually, all the parent they come, they don't come at the same time. Come, they come about 10 minutes before, half hour apart, some of them come by noon, some 10, 9, 8, 7:30. And the time they pick up, the same thing. Sometimes people pick up at 3:00, the early one, 3:30, 4:00, 4:30, and 5:00. So the traffic issue, we don't see that problem at all, because they don't come at the same time, three cars at the same time, no. Maybe once a month, we see two car come at the same time, but five minutes, they're all gone. So we, we know that's a many kid, but the all the car, all the parent don't come at the same time. So we don't see that, that many car on the line or in the parking or on the curb.
Have you, do you have any complaints lodged into the state of California on your facility?
You mean to complain?
Are there any complaints lodged against you that you're aware of?
Small now, so now we, we want to be become large, and the state say you have to come after your CD first, to follow that rule further, and after that, if they approve it, and the state will approve for me after that.
So as, you don't know if you, as of right now, you don't have-
Right now, I don't know I have any problem with that. I don't know.
Regarding the number of people that are, need to be with you, like you said, you're going to hire a part-time person.
Oh, yes.
And, and so if you have, have up to 14, whatever mix of, mix of infants and toddlers there are, it could be what, five or six people?
That's okay. The state require a, from licensing of California, if the small license, which you need only one worker, only one person, that's okay. If you become last license, so you need one worker plus one more assistant, that should be legal enough, so you don't need three worker. Maximum you need two, that's fine. When they inspect my, my home, if they see two worker, I mean, when we have a last license, that's good enough. But right now, in my home, we have already two, me and my wife. So even though, you know, if they say tomorrow we have a last license, we say, okay.
I see.
Yeah, because we are ready for the manpower. But by the way, now we still, we have already one worker, we are submitting to the state that for the help, for the assistant. So we're saying that we have one more people on the line already, the worker.
And this is your home as well?
Yeah, my home, yes.
All right. Thank you.
I've got, I've got one question. So the kids all have to stay downstairs, is that my understanding?
Yeah, I have much be all upstairs.
And how, how big is the house?
My house is 3,000 square foot, two-story.
How much is downstairs, you think?
One bedroom downstairs, four bedroom upstairs.
Okay.
One bathroom downstairs, two bathroom upstairs.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up public comment. Mr. John Russo.
Good evening, Mayor Fasenelli and members of the city council. My name is John Russo. My wife and I have been residents of Villa Park since 1972, and I live at 10691 Providence Drive, next door to the facility that's asking for the increase in student, children. We have been aware of this request by our neighbor for a large family daycare center, and we have serious concerns with this request. When Villa Park was incorporated in 1962, the only area where business could be operated were here in the town center. The vision of our Hamlet community has been destroyed with requests such as these. The request to operate a large daycare center in this R1 residential district is a travesty to the peace, tranquility, and lifestyle of the residents of Providence Drive and Albany Circle. However, I understand the state of California Department of Social Services mandate this is allowable, and thus, ersets the city zoning laws. While opening a small family daycare center, as defined in Title 22, Division 12, Chapter 3, and the other information, with a maximum of eight children is undesirable to have in the neighborhood. A large family daycare center with a maximum of 14 children is even less desirable. Understanding you cannot deny the request completely, we respectfully ask you limit the size to a small family daycare center. Being that this business will operate in our one zone and not a commercial, commercial zone, we request you limit the hours and days of operation to a reasonable timetable to include five days a week, which we understand that Mr. Bowie has agreed to, Monday to Friday, and we ask the time be from 7:30 till 5:00 PM. The maximum, the ramifications of operating a large family child or daycare center in an R1 zone neighborhood are significant. The increased hours and increased number of children would cause, we feel, a traffic problem for all residents of Providence Drive. The increased traffic will increase the danger to the children currently living and playing in the neighborhood. The increased traffic and noise will decrease the quality of life for the residents significantly, including for my wife, who suffers from cardiomyopathy, a virus damaged her heart, a serious lung disease, and debilitating back problem for which she experiences severe pain daily. Because of these problems, she must have a rest which is difficult to acquire, I feel and she feels, with a large family daycare center located next door. The decrease in property values by allowing such a business within the neighborhood will be significant, needless to say. Therefore, we ask the city council to consider the request and those of my neighbors who have spoken to me and made the phone calls as indicated by Mr. Pasqua. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mr. Witcherbottom?
Jared, what do you think about the, the mic thing?
Much better.
Can I actually move it over here?
Yeah.
Right here?
There you go.
That's what you do. This building was open long before ADA was a requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and council, thank you for hearing this issue today. As was stated earlier, it is under state control. I worked for the Board of Supervisors at the time that it was so, back in 1976. Cities used to have control over their own destiny, but it was taken away. And now it's up to you to respond the best you can to what you can do, which was limited time, hours, and age of a large facility. I think the first thing to state is that the difference between toddlers, I don't notice it now, I live down the corner, and I don't notice it now, it's not bothering, I don't think it's bothering the neighborhood much, but the difference between toddlers and 12-year-olds is drastic. I don't think anybody needs to address that. And I think a number of 12-year-olds in that household is going to be different than a number of toddlers. Also, I don't know what the sanitary requirements are for the number of children that you would be increasing. I understand there's one bedroom, or one bathroom downstairs and, and two upstairs. The children are not allowed upstairs, so I don't know what the sanitary situation will be. Also, the trash collection is going to increase trash collection in, in the area. And you heard John speak of the traffic, you know, it's very difficult to get out of our area there now from Providence on to Lincoln with the school traffic in the morning. You've done a good job of trying to maintain the U-turns down at the other end, but our end is backed up from people trying to turn left and right. I understand the cars won't all be coming en masse, but I think that you will see them around within the same 15 to 20-minute period most days, coming and going. We now have a sign up to test speed and number of cars through the neighborhood. Now, Mike put that up today at a neighbor's request, and I think what we're going to see is a interesting number of cars. I think we had 150 go through in a 24-hour period, and that's still a pretty good number for an internal resident street. So I would request you deny the CUP, and let alone as it is, it's doing a good job now, and I don't think there's any need to increase it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other public comment on this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. This, you have a, you, would you like to make on this agenda, I don't?
Yes.
Yes, please, come on up. Thank you. For those of you coming in, if you want to fill out a blue card to make it a little bit easier for us up here, that would be great for public comment.
I'm sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you. And your name?
My name is Laura Mendoza. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My husband Perry and my two daughters live on 10651 Providence Drive and have been residents of Villa Park since 2010. I'm here tonight to state my strong opposition to the continue use permit, conditional use permit, which requires approval to expand the current small family childcare center to a large family care center with a maximum of 14 children in an R1 residential street. Before I state my concerns, I would like to tell you a bit about myself and why I am opposed. I grew up in Villa Park. My parents owned a home from 1973 to 1998 on Feather Hill Drive. They were actively involved in the community, as I have since become. I have very fond memories of growing up in Villa Park, having my siblings and I play in our front yard, on our streets, in what felt like a very small and safe town. When my husband and I decided to look for a home to purchase to raise our children in, we were repeatedly drawn to Villa Park after exploring numerous other cities. We felt very blessed to purchase our home on Providence Drive and have very much enjoyed our neighborhood and raising our girls there. Tonight, I would like to state my concerns of why I am opposed to a large family daycare center on my street. I am very concerned about the number of children- I am very concerned about the number of children in the vehicles causing traffic problems for my family and other residents on Providence Drive. I know this issue has already been addressed by another speaker and by the, the person asking for the application. However, I want to make it known to the council and to the mayor that my neighbors and I have had ongoing concerns about the traffic on Providence Drive, largely because it's indicated we are so close to the traffic up to Villa Park Elementary. To address these concerns, I contacted the city engineer on February eight, February eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and requested a children at play sign on our street, which the city promptly responded to. And we appreciate that. However, I am also concerned for the safety of my children and other children with the increased vehicles that would be on the street, dropping off and picking up children every day. I work at a hospital, I'm very familiar, I'm very familiar with the devastating accidents that occur when one child or one vehicle makes one bad choice. With more vehicles in an R1 zone for a residential area, there is simply more risk when a business is allowed to expand. Lastly, I'm concerned about property value by allowing a business to, on my street and within the neighborhoods of Villa Park. I hope that my children can have the positive growing up years that I had in Villa Park, in a quiet town that continue, that can continue to be known as the hidden jewel. In closing, I ask the council to deny the application for expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for listening. I also live, I am a neighbor of Mrs. Mendoza. I live directly next door. I have three young children.
What's your name?
Sorry. And our children.
What's your name?
My name is Allison.
Thank you.
And I was able to send an email as well, and I have the same concerns about traffic. Mrs. Mendoza and I speak frequently about our children being able to play out front. We are often concerned about cars coming quickly down our street. We do appreciate you putting the speed limit reminder so that cars, particularly when making the turn from Lincoln onto Providence, quickly coming down, making that right turn. We are the second and third house in, and there is another family across the street who also sent an email. And our children like to play. They're always supervised, but we do have concerns about the speed with which people are coming down our street and the number of cars coming down our street as well. We've even gone so far as to purchase each of us a glowing green little guy with a red flag to remind people. But we do feel that a larger business on our street would only serve to increase traffic. I, while watching my children playing out front, have noticed cars dropping off and picking up at, at the home. And as it stands right now, it doesn't seem to be presenting a problem, but we do feel that that increase in the number of children being served by the daycare would only serve to increase the number of cars on our street, and that is concerning to us. My husband and I also are, look specifically in Villa Park, knowing that it was a wonderful place to raise children, and we want our children to be safe on the street. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment. We'll bring it back to council. Did this go to CDC?
The matter did go to CDC, but they did not provide a recommendation. We wanted to wait until we can receive the input from the public. Unfortunately, CDC doesn't have noticing requirements as city council does.
I have a question. It's back to Ray, though. What, what is our latitude in terms of making this decision? What, what criteria do we have and what parameters of authority do we have? We can approve it with, at a different number, we can deny it entirely. What are we looking at here as far as council's authority?
Well, going, going back to the conditions of approval, I mean, if there are concerns with respect to the operation of this, this use, this facility, it is certainly within your prerogative to add conditions to mitigate those, those concerns. Certainly, you also have the ability to deny it, subject to findings, to support the denial.
I, I did some pretty good, I used some pretty good research on it today.
It's discretion, so that's what I wanted to know.
Well, I, I move to deny this conditional use permit to operate a large family daycare within the R1 zoning district. There's a safety factor that goes with this to increase from the amount of children that are in there making it a small daycare to a very large daycare. And for the safety of the residents and the safety of the Villa Park, I make a motion to deny it.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second your motion. I think anytime you mix traffic and with children, it's inappropriate and irresponsible. We should do whatever we can to protect the children that, so that they can play on the front yards of our streets and homes without worry of, of traffic. So I'd like to second your motion.
Is that a motion or just your comments?
Motion.
It was a motion?
But, yes.
Madam Mayor, if the motion is going to be to deny the CUP, I'd recommend that you make the motion, but that you bring it back to adopt a resolution of denial that has written findings.
Okay.
At the May meeting.
Okay.
We leave the public hearing open for noticing purposes.
I'd like to add to this that, that's seventeen people in that house on the ground floor in an area that didn't really contemplate that. I think that substantially changes the character of the neighborhood and really imposes a burden on that little street, so.
So added to the motion is that we will continue this to the next meeting to adopt a resolution?
And I'll add that to my second.
Ready for vote? Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries, five oh.
All right, our next item is item number six, review of the parking by permit restrictions on Feather Hill Drive, Mountain View Circle, and Dotson Way.
Madam Mayor, my personal residence may give rise to a conflict under the FPP, FPPPC regulations that were recently revised by the FPPC and which, as revised, would allow me to participate in the discussion, but I cannot participate in, in this discussion until such a time as the new rule is published. For that reason, I need to recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay, staff?
Sorry, I'm waiting for some, some of the doors to open. Right now, we have some members of the public outside who are here to hear this item.
That want to hear this? Okay, sure, we can wait. Of course.
Open the doors for number, yeah, number six. So let's see who's here. So I, I'm, I'm sure this item needs no staff report. We all know why everybody's here for tonight. At the September meeting of last year, the city council implemented parking by permit only on Feather Hill, Mountain View, and Dotson from seven AM to seven PM, seven days a week. At that time, it was directed to return in January for a review of the restrictions. And then in January, the matter was continued another ninety days. So that brings us to, to where we are tonight. As Councilman Colacott mentioned, he has to recuse himself as a potential to give rise as a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act. Mid-April, the Fair Political Practices Commission, the FPPC, amended several of their regulations to what's known as the public generally exemption, which may possibly apply here in his case to allow him to vote on this matter. They just adopted those regulations. They have to send it up to the Office of Administrative Law for Processing, which takes thirty-five to forty-five days, so probably by the end of May. You know, I'll just leave that where it is and, and note it for you, but tonight, we're here to review and discuss the parking restrictions on Feather Hill. Options are to continue the matter another sixty, ninety days, to make the restrictions permanent, to amend the restrictions as you see fit, to remove the restrictions altogether. Our recommendation is that you open it up for public hearing, receive public input, and then provide direction accordingly.
All right, let's open up public hearing, and our first speaker is Vince Russini.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Hello, my name is, and council members. Hello, my name is Vince Russini. My family and I live on Valley Drive in Villa Park. I'm a resident, a homeowner, a voter, and most importantly, a parent of two small children. There's nothing more important to my wife and I than our children. I'm a law enforcement officer specializing in traffic safety. I'm coming to you today as a concerned citizen and the chairman of the Villa Park Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. Though not specifically speaking on behalf of the committee, in regards to the permit parking issue, it should be noted that the committee did vote unanimously to encourage that the council demand that Orange Unified School District deal with this issue and make some changes immediately. It's a safety issue. Back to my comments. I have personally witnessed the horrendous school-related traffic issues at issue tonight. These issues are dangerous and need to be addressed immediately. I have numerous concerns about the current conditions our residents and children face every day. By mixing an overwhelming amount of vehicles in such a small residential area with children is a recipe for disaster. I'm seriously concerned that one of our children is going to be a fatality. If the current traffic conditions can continue, it's just a matter of time, in my opinion. I would further add that I know what it's like to look into a parent's eyes and tell them their, their son or daughter's not coming home, and you don't ever want that experience. And this is an issue that has to be dealt with immediately. With respect to the agenda item in this question, this council needs to postpone the vote on the issue until the entire council can weigh in on the issue. Based upon my years of law, of traffic law enforcement experience, this council must unanimously begin to hold the Orange Unified School District accountable for creating this situation and for preventing the solution to it. The mayor and the council must fulfill their oath of office to the voters of Villa Park by permanently creating permanent permit parking districts from seven AM to seven PM on Feather Hill Drive and Dotson Way. If the city of Or, if the city of Orange, city council recognizes similar problems around McPherson Elementary, shouldn't our city council support the residents of Villa Park by restricting the number of parked vehicles in our residential neighborhoods? By reducing parking on our residential streets, we will encourage the Orange Unified School District to examine the problem they have created. By supporting the permit parking, permanent permit parking, we will create better visibility for the children that attend these schools and for the children that live in our homes. This is not a unique or a special interest. In fact, in two thousand and seven, Resolution number two thousand and seven dash two-nine-three-zero was unanimously passed by the mayor and all city council members. In this resolution, twenty-six streets were deemed to be impacted by educational institutions, were impacted by uses not complimentary or in harmony with residential neighborhoods. Madam Mayor and council members, I appreciate your passion for your children, for those that attend, that attend the schools in question, but we cannot ignore dangerous safety conditions that exist around our schools. Please do not ignore this problem any longer. Given these facts, I respectfully request that you fulfill your obligation and postpone this matter until all five council members can weigh in on this issue and then act unanimously to hold Orange Unified accountable. Thank you for your time.
Lori Triber?
Hi, my name is Lori Triber, and I live in Dotson Way in Villa Park. And I'm a hundred percent agreement with what was just said. It was, actually, it was a lot of what I was going to say. In listening to this, the previous point on agenda about this family daycare, it, it, it dawned on me that you're concerned about fourteen children. I, I'm in agreement with them that it, you know, that it's not passed, that they have that in their neighborhood. But you're talking about fourteen kids in a daycare center. You're talking four thousand children entering the city on our streets surrounding these schools. We've talked about this for years. We now have, you know, I, I do have a little bit of an issue with what went public, written in a public newspaper, which, in my opinion, was not supportive of, of us. It was, it, we're, it's like you're telling us that we need to go and, and earn this respect and put up with it, and that what we're saying is a minor inconvenience. This isn't a minor inconvenience. This is a serious safety issue for everybody involved. The Orange Unified School District created it. They opened enrollment on these schools, knowing how big the area was that they were impacting. They've known about it for years because all of the people on the streets that are asking for this permit parking have been telling them and been telling the city about it, so they knew. But they didn't stop the enrollment until, what, a year, a year ago, twelve hundred students. So the fact is, we want the permit parking, and I think that anybody in the city that wants the permit parking has the right to protect their property, have privacy, have the peace and quiet. It isn't reasonable what the people surrounding these schools is being asked to give up. It, it just is not reasonable. The, the other thing I'm hearing, and that went public as well, was that anybody could take us seriously, that the school district could take us seriously, that we were selfish, is the most irresponsible thing I have ever seen published about an agenda that we have with valid points. We have notified every proper authority of what these issues are. They are not inconvenient. I'm not saying that I can't do what I want, when I want every second. That isn't what we're talking about here. It's bigger than that, and I think everybody here knows that. So I want to be on the record to say that that was very upsetting, to see that written, and we're the citizens of the city of Villa Park, and we're relying on our council to represent us and be on our side. So this is not an unreasonable request. We're not being dramatic about what this impact is. So, you know, based off of what he, the previous speaker said, I'm in a hundred percent agreement. I'm in agreement with anybody else in the city of Villa Park that does not want to be impacted this way. We have a right. We pay the property taxes, we support the city, we've paid a lot of money for our homes, and it's just, it's not reasonable. So I just want to be on the record to say that. We want the permit parking on the two streets, and we would also request that the vote on this important issue get delayed till June so that we have the, the attention of all five of the city council. I think it's, it's the only fair thing to do. It's what we expect. That's why the city council is made up of five people. So if it can be changed because there's going to be a difference in June, I would ask that it be delayed so that five people can vote on this very important issue that's been ongoing, by the way, that I've been involved with for at least eight years. Thank you.
Dan Triber? Mrs. Dotson? Dotson?
Good evening. My name is Dan Triber. I live on Dotson Way. I'm really impressed with what my wife just said and the first speaker. I basically think they said it all, and I agree, agree with everything that they said. I just want to remind you that everybody on Dotson Way wants the permitted parking. The last time you extended this meeting was because of one reason. You wanted to see how the Little League weighed in. That was the one reason that you extended it. And the Little League has nothing to do with parking on Dotson. So they, they never, they, they never fill up the street far enough to get onto Dotson. So I don't think they even fill up the parking lot across the street from Saravilla. You know, I, I watch it every day. I watch it every game. So I, I just, thank you for your time, and just want to remind you that we want permitted parking. It's a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Beth? You're up, yes.
The concern of the residents on Feather Hill Drive and Dotson Way, excuse me, is the safety and the peace of our streets. Before parking by permit only was instituted, we faced vehicles parked more than halfway up the street, drivers making U-turns, sometimes at unsafe speeds, and students were forced to walk in the center of the street navigating between the vehicle, vehicles. When we begged the city council for help, we were told, "The traffic is not Villa Park's problem. You need to take the problem to OUSD." And then the only option you have is to. And then the only option you have is to petition for parking by permit only. No other options were presented to us. So we did exactly that, and the policy has been a success. We are able to safely navigate our streets without fear of a traffic accident. Now, electronic petitions and letters are being, have been submitted asking the city council to reopen Featherhill Drive and Dotson Way to parking. Some describe the traffic as an inconvenience. We do not describe facing a vehicle, making a U-turn into head-on traffic as an inconvenience, and that's the sort of situation we have faced. We just, we are described as a small group of selfish people. More than two-thirds of the residents of Featherhill Drive and Dotson Way signed the petition for parking by permit only. There was a solid majority of the residents who supported this policy. So it's not just a small group of selfish people. Now, the Villa Park Little League comment I've heard, it's only scheduled for three, after 3:00 p.m. for four months of the year. How can the Villa Park Little League impact the residents? What is not mentioned is OUSD, not Villa Park, controls what events are scheduled, what time they start, and when they end. Villa Park has no say. OUSD, also as scheduled, junior soccer league, adult soccer league, adult soccer league playoffs that lasted two weeks, seven days a week, well into the evening. In 2014, the residents of Featherhill Drive and Dotson Way were overwhelmed with nonstop activity and traffic on our residential streets, and that's why we went to the city council and begged for help. Now, there isn't enough time tonight to respond to every claim you've read in the mail, in the letters and petitions. My point, the city council has to understand the complete picture of what the residents are facing and what we are experiencing all day. We live there all day, we see the whole picture. For the last year, the residents have worked with OUSD, the school PFSOs, the city engineers of Orange and Villa Park to study the traffic and identify solutions. All the groups in that task force agree that OUSD has not provided adequate parking for school and athletic events. We're in agreement. But there are solutions, like adding a parking lot in the Saravilla Field adjacent to Sereno Avenue. Mike Christensen, the superintendent of OUSD himself, said it would serve both school and athletic event parking, and it would provide a safe access for Villa Park Little League for students to access the schools. They would not have to cross Sereno at all. So why doesn't, so why don't changes like this move forward? Well, there's a fundamental difference of opinion about who's responsible for parking, Villa Park or OUSD. Last year, the city council told the residents, "This is not Villa Park's problem. You need to take the problem to OUSD." Now, the Sereno Elementary PFSO, the school commuters, Villa Park Little League, they're saying the exact opposite. This is Villa Park's problem, and we need your residential streets for parking. And I'll hurry on. Is Villa Park going to roll over for that argument? You need to give the letter writers and the electronic petitioners the same answer you gave the residents. This is OUSD's problem. You need to take your concerns to OUSD. They have the space, they have the budget, there are solutions. I'm sorry, but we do not have the space. We have a two-lane street. The vote tonight is going to show us how the city council addresses this problem, how it treats its residents and voters. We ask, I ask, that you vote to make parking by permit only on Featherhill Drive and Dotson Way permanent. We need this, and we certainly needed to impact, to continue to have OUSD participate. Thank you.
Thank you. What happened, what happened to that? Okay.
Just want to go over.
No, no, I'm sorry. We weren't sure what that noise, that was new for us. Carol Stevens. Thank you.
My name is Carol Stevens and I live on Villa Park Drive, and I'm going to tell you of a couple of my experiences. I have a small driveway on the side of my house. It's parallel to my regular driveway. It's only maybe six feet wide, just wide enough for a car to get in.
Carol, do you live on Featherhill or Villa Park Drive?
Featherhill.
Featherhill, thank you.
On several occasions, the cars will park and block my driveway. Now, they may only be a foot or two feet into my driveway, but I can't get out. They've even parked there when I had my car in the driveway, which makes it obvious that this is a driveway, not a parking space. It's happened several times, and once I was going to have to tow and I was able to locate the owner by asking some other people if they knew who owned the Suburban, but that killed about 25 minutes. It is very inconvenient. The other problem I have is I have an avocado tree in front of my house. Beautiful avocado tree, gives lots of avocados, but when you have a tree that bears wonderful fruit, you get rats. So to keep the rat problem down, I called the vector control. They came out, they had said that the way to get rid of the rats is to take a two-inch board by 18 inches, hammer a rat trap on each end, hammer it into the tree, which I did, two of them. So I had four rat traps in the tree, which worked wonderfully. One day I came home and I see two young boys, about seven or eight years old, climbing up in the tree with the mother in the car directing the children where the avocados are. Can you imagine what would happen if that child stuck his hand in a rat trap? He would fall, he would get hurt, we would be sued. It was really mind-boggling to me. But the problem is, it's not just traffic. And I have, I'm not saying all parents, but there are a number of parents who don't care. And this is really one of the biggest concerns. Another personal experience I had had, Featherhill has an island on it, and the people will block, park on the street, and then their friends will pull up next to them and they're talking back and forth to each other. You can't get through unless you go around to the other side of the island. Well, that means I'm going the wrong way. Frequently, I would do that. Once some parent was trying to beat another car getting in and we almost had a head-on collision. Of course, I was going the wrong way, so it would have been my fault. But the thing is that it's not just the traffic problem. It's the way some of these parents, not all of them, but a good number of them, conduct themselves with their teaching, their children, and it is a very bad safety issue. You only need to have one tragedy to realize how bad the situation is. And I think I said enough for now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Tabashi, and I can't make out the last name, and I might be saying it wrong, I'm sorry, Tadashi, on 9661 Dotson Way? Excuse me, sir, if I ruined your name, you can come tell me how to say it correctly.
You know, I like to complain about Dotson Way. I like to have it not to 7 o'clock yet. I don't like to change. I live third house on Villa Park. Today, I always, when I go out there to stand, people don't use my driveway. They come up and back out. Today, I put a trash bin on both of them because it was trash day. You have to bring it out, I just put it back there to see how many cars will, you know, make U-turn, the two people's parking. Three cars, two in the front and one in the next door. They made the U-turn dirty now because they used to make it in my driveway. And my driveway is cracked on a funny place. It's real thick, the driveway. You know, it's not thin, but it's cracked in funny locations. The curb is cracked, and all the curb side on my place has all the tire marks, the black tire marks. Those cars that used to park in my, turn in my driveway, today they didn't go in my driveway because I had trash bins out there and I stand, stood out there. And so they made a U-turn on the street, you know, which is proper, to make it only on the street because it's a two-lane street. Long time ago, in 1970, it was only one dirt road with a little asphalt in the center. So I had two, five oleanders in the front, and then I planted five citrus. I kept the two tangerine trees. And then a couple of years ago, I had a car park in that, that the kid would, they would park next to the tangerine tree, and the kid would come out and pick the tangerines. And one day, I told him, "I don't want you to pick the tangerines," you know? And I referred it to the cop, policeman. I think the policeman talked to them, and that night, they broke my bedroom window with a rock. And before that, the soccer game, there was a soccer game that you used to have. I don't know why my neighbor went someplace. She should have known that the whole of the cars were parked on the street in case her house got robbed. I saw the white car parked there, you know, but I didn't think nothing of it until that lady told me she got robbed, you know, they broke into her house. And she didn't, she, you know, when she came to tell me about that, I told her there was a white car parked there. Still, to this day, I have people parking on my Dotson Way and make a U-turn on my driveway and then park on the side just before the school lifts out. Before, I used to have a whole bunch of cars make U-turn. Why that signal on the corner says "No U-turn"? Does it mean justice? Why didn't they have a Dotson Way? Then I wouldn't have that problem. They could have went up to the end of the street because the end of the street had it wide so they could turn and come back this way. And people, it's kind of foolish to go that far. Stayed out, they used to. Before, I used to have a lot of people come up halfway up the driveway and back out, not just only a few, a whole lot, until the 7:00 to 4:00, no parking was put up. That's why I came today. I usually don't come, but it's cracked, so it doesn't matter anymore now. But it gets me disgusted, people parking, you know, when they know it's the 7:00 to 4:00, no parking, and make you turn into people's driveway. Yeah, I saw my problem, put trash bags every day in the curb there. Then they don't park on the next door, north of me. One day on the stop for me, he put his two cars, one on the other, opposite side, and one facing angle on this side so the cars won't come. But today, he doesn't have that on there, and one car parked in the jar up on the wide side, and the other car drove up on the narrow side. That's my issue. Might be a bad one, but I'm not getting any benefit from no U-turn. I don't know what that U-turn stands for, whether it's just a little section on the corner there to make U-turn, or is it not on the street? That I'd like to know. Why put it there if it means you could go up a little further and make the U-turn? And then I got a problem too. Why isn't it painted red?
That's finishing up.
Yeah, I'm finishing up. Why isn't that part where you drive, you know, turn in? People park there. Why can't you put a little red strip so that the, on both sides when sometimes there's cars? Some people have a hard time turning right turn. Okay, that's the issue I want to make. My nanny told me that, you know, that she has a hard time when they park right next to the curb, you know, on a street. She says that she has a hard time getting out. So that's why I have brought that part up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brad Eder.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. My name is Brad Eder. I'm a proud 38-year resident of Villa Park and I'm the current president of Villa Park Little League. As most of you know, Villa Park Little League has been playing on these fields for 51 years. I personally had the pleasure of playing there myself from 1976 to 1985. Although I don't have the numbers available to tell you how bigger our league was than it is now, I can tell you that we had more divisions and more teams in each division. We were much bigger then than we are now, and we still have parking issues. I've heard comments that we don't fill our lots. Maybe late in the day on a Saturday, there's open spots, but we use all of our parking and we need more. I also heard a comment that the Orange Unified School District approved soccer tournaments. That's simply not true. The permit is issued to Villa Park Little League from 4:00 p.m. till dusk, Monday through Friday, Saturdays and Sundays. Saravilla will come to us, asking us for permission for there to be a soccer game or other event on those fields during our permit time. I can't speak for presidents prior to me, I've only been the president since last August. Those requests have not been approved by this board for many reasons. For us to continue to lose parking going forward are gonna make our kids have to walk further to the fields, which is a safety issue. There's also a misconception that we pay to use those fields, that the school district is making money off of us. That is also not true. We do not pay permitting fees. In return, we pay to maintain all of those baseball fields on our cost. And they're the best-looking fields in the district. We just got done with the tournament. We have beautiful fields across from these neighbors for them to look at. We pay for that. So I'm gonna take off my president hat for a moment. I'm gonna put on my resident hat. I've been, I've been a resident here for 38 years, but this looks like to me is privatizing two streets in the city of Villa Park. Where does it stop? I don't see the same issues around Villa Park Elementary. I don't see them around Villa Park High School. You know, it's, we're creating a slippery slope. What's gonna be next? You know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't want to get in all the traffic studies, but we're creating a precedent. If we pass this, it's gonna be difficult to stop. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Lenz? No? Okay, all right. Bob Wolf?
Madam Mayor, City Council, Bob Wolf, 9642 Dotson Way, Villa Park. 41-year resident of Villa Park. Raised two children, going to all the three schools in Villa Park, and have grandchildren that we're very much in love with, that come and visit us once in a while. But as a contractor and developer over the years, the city require us to give the parking that's required to take care of themselves. So if the planning department would, if I wanted to build something in the city of Villa Park, I have to give them the parking that they require me to give. You're not requiring the city of Orange to come up with the parking. And I just don't feel that you guys are really taking a look at this and you're taking a bad view on the people that pay the taxes here in the city of Villa Park. And the articles that were in the paper, we weren't real happy with. I mean, I'm 70-some years old, I've been here for 40-some years. I don't feel I'm that old yet. I don't think I'm any older than some of the gentlemen sitting up above here. But, you know, all we want is to be treated like citizens of the city of Villa Park. But, you know, all we want is to be treated like citizens of the city of Villa Park. And that's what we're looking for you to do, is to take care of the citizens here of Villa Park. That's what you were elected for, not the city of Orange or the city schools. You take care of us. That's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Is Mr. Stevens here? Jack Stevens?
Good evening. My name is Jack Stevens. I live on Feather Hill Drive. I've lived in Villa Park since 1970, so I've probably lived here longer than most people. And I have also raised children here. And I want to talk to you about rats. My wife talked to you about rats that came into our avocado tree. I want to talk about a couple of different rats. And these rats are on the Orange Unified School District Board. And I was first introduced into them in 1970 when I came here and there was a meeting of the neighborhood about the school district. And we went to the school district meeting and there were a couple of people there dressed in suits and very well-educated and spoke very well. And they explained to us that they were doing the best that they could with the funds that they had available. And after they got done speaking, everybody was kind of silent. And then I got up and I told them that I was not happy with the school and I told them that the classes were too big and I didn't think that my children were getting a good education. After I sat down, all of a sudden, all the other people in the audience started to speak up too. And they all had the same message. They all complained about the job that the Orange Unified School District was doing. And the school district kept saying, oh, we're trying to give your children a quality education. And the trouble was that they were, but the quality was not a good quality, it was a poor quality. And all these years, all these 45 years that I've lived here, I have felt the same way about the Orange Unified School District. They are not to be trusted, they don't do a good job, and they, they don't provide what they need to provide. And I don't think that they're going to provide parking that is required and that they should unless their hand is forced. And that's where you come in. If you don't force them to do something, they are not going to do anything. The situation is going to continue. And we, the people, the residents on these streets, are going to suffer. And when, when I was told that the, it was a group organizing and the group was told to go to the Orange Unified School District and sit down and reason with them, I really, I didn't want to say anything, but I was actually laughing up my nose at the idea that the school district would do something. Because I've seen what they do and they don't do anything. They complain about their budget and they do nothing. And frankly, they're not going to do anything unless they have no other choice. And so I've heard the people here tonight, they're appealing to you and I'm appealing to you, that we need you to do something, we need you to take action, we need to restrict the parking on our streets so that they go ahead and build a parking lot that they can do. It'll cost them a few dollars, but they can do it. If they want to recoup the money, they could put up some meters and let the people pay for the parking. It's their business, whatever they do. But we need to show them that they have to do something. And that's what I'm hoping you're going to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Ramirez?
Hi, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Amy Ramirez. I'm a nurse anesthetist and on a daily basis, I do a lot of anesthetics for children that has been injured by motor vehicle accidents and all kinds of traumas and accidents. But my main concern here is that my family resides on Dodson Way. As we have young children of our own, safety of our home and our street is my utmost priority. The fact that the commuter parents from Orange are only addressing the inconvenience of parking is a shame. When our family bought our home, we were fully aware the location of the school is compared to where our home is, which is the reason why we bought it, because I lived across the street from my school when I was younger as well. However, we did not experience the normal neighborhood school traffic that we are occurring, that is occurring now. Further, I have found the commuter parents dropping off their children to attend school are not conscientious of the safety of any other children but their own. First of all, some parents run late and they drive down our street as if it's a highway, not aware that there are neighborhood children walking on the streets without a safety of a sidewalk. Secondly, we have a horseshoe driveway and many parents have driven through our private property as though it is a public thoroughfare. There have been several occasions where a few parents had almost run over my children doing this and my 10-year-old daughter is here to witness anything you need to ask her. When they make the U-turn on our driveway, they drive so fast in order not to get caught, they do not see my children around the corner. On one occasion, the commuter parent was a foot away from running over my 15-year-old son who was on a penny board on the other side of the horseshoe driveway. Should we, the residents of Villa Park, jeopardize the safety of our children, yours, mine, for the convenience of commuters that do not have such self-serving manner? I have children myself and I'm very aware of the schools and the sports, they all play sports as well, and I totally very much support that. Councilman, do you think this is reasonable? Would you and your wife and your spouse or your husband accept this kind of activity on your street? Now, we park our suburban, our driveway for the commuters to not drive through our driveway every morning. We, I pull it out every morning. Now, this, it's in itself is a nuisance to our family, having to leave our vehicle out every morning. I have spoken to the sheriff, however, there's nothing they can do for us until someone gets hurt. Do I have to wait for one of our children to get seriously injured for this to occur? Another situation occurred a couple of weeks ago that is very upsetting. I opened up my garage from the inside, already in my car to pull out, only to find a woman driving halfway up my driveway, attempting to make her U-turn through my driveway. I honked the horn as I knew my daughter was waiting for my husband outside of the gate. The woman reversed her van and drove off recklessly. First, I was relieved to know my daughter was safe as she was on the other side and not a, normally she's 10 years old and really not aware of her surroundings or who's driving where or the environment. The next morning, the same woman drove by the home, honking, making gestures in the car and her children. I was not there, but my daughter, who saw her the day before, recognized her and reported the incident to me. Last week, I was putting my belongings in the trunk, the same van, mother and I'm assuming it's her son, drove by again, stopped in front of my home, screamed and yelled at me. I could not make exactly out what they were saying because they were both yelling at the same time. The school traffic situation is getting really way out of hand. We have moved here a few years ago with the perception Villa Park is a safe neighborhood to raise our three children. We are not only dealing with traffic safety issues, but now also aggressive violent behavior, not to mention damage to our personal property as some of the, some of what you have already heard. Tire marks all over my driveway, cracks, and not to mention the safety of my own children. We cannot allow our children to play in our front yard due to the irresponsible commuter parents who feel they are entitled and demanding parking and traffic inconveniences without regards to the safety of the children. It would be irresponsible for our city to mix traffic and our children. When an incident occurs, it would be the child or the children that are going to be the one that's losing out. Again, we purchased our home in Villa Park with the perception that our children can play outside without us fearing for their safety. We're finding out this is not the case and very disappointed. I ask the City Council to be proactive in correcting this matter. And I also ask that, on a final note, that you, that I would request the delay of the June City Council meeting to be allowed so that all the entire council can vote on this matter.
I think we need, we're going to take a five-minute break and we will resume in five minutes. Thank you.
We're getting out of here tonight. Pardon? Think we're...
Government, Jim, it doesn't have to make sense, it's government. Who did you talk to? How many more do we have to go?
No, the other side, we only have very few from the other side.
How many more left? If you don't get some more in the interim.
We're gonna convene our meeting. Thank you very much, and if we could have, let's see, Richard Flores, please, take the podium, would like to speak. Richard Flores.
Hi. Good evening, City Council and Mayor, my name is Richard Flores, I reside at ninety-eight fifty-one Leatres Drive in Villa Park. Living here, lived here now for eleven years. I have two children that, I have three children that all attended the schools here in Villa Park. I have an eleven-year-old that went through the whole Little League, Villa Park Little League now since five, six years now. It's easy as a kid, I have my other one outside right now, that's eight-years-old, that is part of the league, I'm a board member, first time, and I'm proud to say that. All these years, being part of a family, Villa Park, it is a gem still. It's no longer hidden, but it is a gem. And I hear all the gripe and the problems, and I do understand the residents with all the issues. I used to live in a private community, where it was a gated community, and I paid homeowners association for the streets, for maintenance in the streets and everything else. This is not being proposed, or, uh, proposed, but I'm listening to everything that's happening with crime that we see in the city. I get it. In my home, we've had issues already, I've had stuff that's been broken into. We've had police officers down there, I've had chainsaws, all sorts of stuff that has happened. But I understand all of this, the issues that we have right now is with the parking. So as Mr. Edder was so kind with his words to share, the problems with Little League. The amount of time that we're there, and I understand that Serrano is a busy street, I've been there at eight o'clock in the morning. I've driven by there, and I avoid that street because I have no business there. I go all the way around. So if this passes with this problem, I absolutely agree that we will no longer, being part of the Little League, will no longer park on that street. I'm gonna find someplace to park, so I'm gonna go down the street and park somewhere else, where it's not, where it's allowed to park. We're gonna be back here in several years, and those residents are gonna be complaining. The same issues that are, you folks are facing now, that's gonna be another problem. And once again, where does it end? Does it move to Villa Park High School? Cause I've driven, I drive down there every single morning down Serrano, and I see all the soccer fields, I see all the football games and all the sporting events that happen there throughout the weekends as well. That means if this passes, that has to go to those, that's those streets, and also pass a law, and will not let the residents, I'm sorry, they will not let anyone to park on those streets as well. So my point being, where's it in? And I understand your position, you guys are here to make the right choice for all of us, I don't know if this is the right solution, you know, we're, is it something that we could come to and have a medium? But the parking issue, as of right now, is not gonna get resolved, cause I don't see that happening. We need your support on this, and maybe not today. Um, I, I just wanna make sure that it's fair for everyone, and have our kids continue to play baseball. Fifty-one years that this Little League has been in, in, in existence, and for it to be taken away, cause there's no parking. That's the future when my kids grow up, and I want them to grow up here in Villa Park as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Gilkerson?
Good evening, everybody. I've been on the board, oh, first Larry Gilkerson, live on Laconia Drive in Villa Park, been here since nineteen ninety-nine. And been on the board of Villa Park the last seven years, have been in the Villa Park Little League for the last ten years with my freshman in Villa Park High School and my twelve-year-old. Uh, and first off, I'm gonna apologize because I may alienate a few people tonight, cause I have a lot of common sense, and I sympathize with the residents on Feather Hill and Dodson Way. I have friends on Feather Hill, they're up, halfway up, past, you know, the issue, and some of them even signed the petition, but there is no traffic that reaches up there, or parking, cause we're talking about parking today. Uh, traffic is what I've heard, and going back to the city council meeting that we were at six months ago, when we first implemented it, and I continue to hear, "Traffic, traffic, traffic, traffic." And in my common sense mind, by having a seven-to-seven permit parking only, would seem to me to create more traffic. Because people can't stop on those streets, so what do they do? They keep moving, they just go around in the block or up the street and come all the way back down, now you are creating traffic up to the top of Feather Hill, because people can't stop, so they just keep going up and come back. So, you know, it's not parking. I keep hearing the complaints, and we've had this now for six months, and yet, it's still an issue. We've had the parking permit only for six months, and it's still an issue. I, I sympathize with rats and avocados being stolen, but that's not the issue. The issue is parking. As compromise, Villa Park Little League will say, "Have seven-to-four permit parking." After three-thirty, and I've been going over to that school with kids going there, and also Little League for the last ten years, there is no traffic on Serrano that's out of the ordinary after three-thirty. So as Villa Park Little League, we are willing to compromise and say, "Vote for the permit parking, but seven to four o'clock." We've lived for fifty-one years, or however long permit parking has been, on Saturday and Sunday. We've never fought that, we've never said anything about that, over the many years that we've been involved. Saturday and Sunday's always been permit parking on those streets, but to make it seven-to-seven does not help traffic. Seven-to-four would be a great compromise for us at Villa Park Little League. I'm gonna use up the last ten seconds and go, because I have kids that may have to go to bed and homework and everything else. To put a red stripe on Serrano is, you know, again, my common sense, to put a red stripe on Serrano, the whole distance, makes no sense whatsoever. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I just wanna clarify something, I don't think anybody's talking about red striping Serrano.
That's the, that's the next issue, and he's leaving.
Oh, that's the, that's the, oh.
Yes, that, that's another, that's another, that's another agenda item.
There's more than this, Rick.
No, I know.
Okay, so Tim, Tim Doring?
Hi, I've been, uh, my name's Tim Doring, uh, live on nine four-seven-one Villa Isle Drive. Born and raised in Villa Park, I grew across from Villa Park Elementary School, right across the street there. And our house was actually exposed to this, to the school itself, so I can understand all the people doing U-turns in our U-shaped driveways as a kid and all that stuff. But that was part of living there across the street, we had a lot of benefits as kids, I was also seven kids, we used the fields and all that stuff, but I can understand the traffic congestion that, yeah. But, uh, that's why my parents bought the house, and that's what we're stuck with, and, um, so I understand the traffic issues, and I understand the concern of, uh, being privatized with the house, and you don't want cars parked in there, but like Larry mentioned earlier, what's happening is because of the parking permits, when you get game times, a lot of the parents get there and the parking's all used up on Serrano, so they're going to these streets making U-turns, trying to find a parking spot, and they end up parking on the other side of Serrano Elementary School and do the long walk. Where everybody's hoping for that one space to open up and park in there, and so you see a lot more traffic circling around these streets, going into the streets and making that U-turn around that island, circling around, trying to find a spot, or get lucky and have somebody actually move from a spot. So by having these permits from seven to seven, like Larry indicated, it creates more traffic. And it's also creating, because of more traffic, more, more safety issues, cause you got kids coming from games, or living across the street with backpacks and, uh, baseball gear and what have you, and some, some of these moms got two kids, so you got one going across the street before she can get to the other one over there. And, uh, the crosswalk situation's a little dicey. Uh, but a lot of the parents that drop off kids for games, they'll drop the kids off an hour before game, come back and try and get parking. Um, by having the permit from seven to seven, it just isolates it so that parking becomes more of an issue. And I think if opening up from, like Larry said, from four o'clock onwards, allows parents at least park their cars, get the kids out of the car, get them across the street safely to the games. The other issue that Larry brought up, and I won't be here for the next docket, is the striping of the red street on Serrano. I mean, I don't know where you get all these cars and all these kids, you got kids with gear trying to get to a baseball game. Uh, you're talking about major safety issues. Uh, being a, a board member of the Villa Park Little League, I'm always conscious of kids by the gate, by the track, waiting for their parents to come up and pick them up. Because there's no parking, it's, it's, the whole street's congested. So a lot of parents come in there and they'd stop, and they load the car up with the kids and what have you, or pick them up. Uh, especially around dusk, and so, uh, the, the issue I bring in hand is I think the permit from seven to four would be more of a safety issue for a vast majority of kids, trying to get to and from the ballparks. And that's all I gotta say, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Maryam Dunderheffer?
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening, Mayor.
I am against the restricting of parking on Feather Hill and Dodson. I live on Oakwood Circle, which is right by Saravilla off of Serrano, and I just feel like blocking the parking on these streets will only create a domino effect for residents on other streets, as Mr. Flores was stating earlier. I am one of those residents who could be impacted by this domino effect. To have permitted parking on two streets in Villa Park by the school will only create other people on other streets who live near the school to apply for permitted parking on their streets, like Brynmar, like Mark Circle, like my street, Oakwood Circle. I, my husband and I chose to live on Oakwood Circle because it was close to all three schools. We understood that there would be traffic. I walk and sometimes drive my kids to school. I walk and drive my kids home from school. Traffic, having the parking restrictions on Oakwood, on Feather Hill and Dodson, in my opinion, have only made the traffic situation worse on Serrano. I sympathize with these people. I, I hate to hear the problems, they are realistic, I have the same problems on my street. Fifteen minutes in the morning, fifteen minutes in the afternoon. That's just what I chose, that's the way it is. I just, I just don't think that restricting parking will fix the problem, I don't think it will at all. If these people want permitted parking on their street, I think maybe they should look into privatizing their street. Then they can pay for the signs and everything else that needs to go into how, whatever it is to, to pay for this restricted parking. I don't really want my tax dollars to pay for that, because I don't think it's fair to have a few people in the community who have legitimate problems, but to have all of our tax dollars paid for that. I, I just don't find the logic in that. Um, I also think that postponing this issue is a tactic, maybe, to bring this vote after school is out, and will interest subside? Probably. So I, I think that it should be voted on now, I mean, this is, this was in September, and it's now almost June, or it's, it's April, but close, very soon the school year will end. I just don't, I just don't agree with this, and I think that's, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Maryam?
Maryam? I have a question for you, if you've got a second.
One?
Yeah, it's brief. And I have it for you, because you're the only one that's commented on this issue. You had indicated that, you'd made two concerns, one, you expressed concern that, that because of the parking, the traffic would move up to your street and others, and that it was making the traffic worse already. But we've had this in play for six months, are you seeing a problem on your street already? Because it's been there for six months, so if you're contemplating a problem, I don't know why it would come, because it's already been that way for six months. Have you seen a problem?
I've seen the congestion build on Serrano. I'll be honest, my house, it has a big wall in front of it, so none of my windows face out to the street, so I really can't honestly tell you that, because I don't see it. Um, I do see in the, in the afternoon more, on my street, the congestion. I think the reason why is because when I get home, Serrano is just letting out, or I'm sorry, Saravilla is just letting out about ten minutes later, twelve minutes later. So I see it in the afternoon, and I do see a lot more people coming down my street and making U-turns and coming out. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Kirschner? Howard Kirschner?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's me again. Uh, Howard Kirschner, Oakwood Circle, thirty-five years, two kids went through all three schools, all three schools in my neighborhood. And two grandchildren are doing that now. I just wanna make a couple points on things I've heard tonight. So I live on Oakwood Circle, I've been there for thirty-five years. All kinds of traffic, twice a day, all kinds of traffic. Bring him on. Because great, we have more kids in our community? We need more kids in our community, we need the youth, we need the traffic. I've been, I've been questioning for years why kids don't walk to school. I walk uphill, two miles in the snow, both ways. No shoes. But they don't. So parents now drop the kids off. Maryam lives three houses from the school, and she drops her kids off, sometimes. So, that's the nature of our lives in Villa Park, it's the nature of our lives in our society. So deal with it. Now, safety. If we permit parking, many have already said, it'll get more unsafe. Because the cars are backing up, they can't stop, they can't park, or wait for the kids to join them on, I, you know, mom parks three houses up on Feather Hill. So the kids walk three houses up on Feather Hill, get in mom's car, and wait a while, because the other kids come over to the other school to the same spot, mom loads them up and leaves. Uh, it's, it's a nature of way we live. If we have problems with safety, let's enforce U-turns. Let's enforce the speeders, let's even force the grapefruit pickers. We can deal with the problem, the problem isn't to stop people from servicing their, their kids in their community. Put my glasses on, I can't read my own writing. Postpone it. So we would postpone and kick this can down the road another month or two, so that one more councilman can vote. Who has already reclusive himself, because he's in an awkward position. Now, he's either in an awkward position and feels he shouldn't participate, or he's waiting for the laws to allow him to participate, even though he shouldn't participate, by his own definition. So let's not kick the can down the road. Four smart people, the heard the public, make a decision. Thank you.
Lynn Berry?
Good evening, I'm Lynn Berry, I live at nine seven-seven-one Nichols Avenue. I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I felt like I probably should. I'm one of the houses, uh, that's right out in front of the school, I have the triple threat every morning, three schools. Hasn't really been a problem for me, because I moved here seventeen years ago, knowing I lived next to a school. Um, I can tell you, in seventeen years, I've had two incidents of kids fighting in my yard, or, you know, one kid was throwing a, a can at, you know, at, at a beehive. That's, that's not a problem, we love kids in Villa Park. I don't know anybody in this room that doesn't love kids, it doesn't, isn't a, a mother, a grandmother, or a great-grandmother, or father. It's, it's the hidden jewel. I came here for the same reasons, but people didn't follow me. Only nine to thirteen percent of all the kids that go to the Villa Park schools even live in Villa Park. I mean, there, and, and everybody says, "Well, you know, the schools weren't, weren't built for all these kids." Well, we have declining enrollment, but we have a completely different society as in nineteen fifty-two, or nineteen fifty, or whenever everybody's been talking about moving here, when everybody walked to school. Kids don't walk to school. And I don't know you, you know, that, you live on Oak, Oakwood, Oak Hill, I drove my child to school. Okay, she went to Serrano, she went to Saravilla, I, I probably walked once or twice, and the reason I didn't fifteen years ago is because of the traffic. Because of trying to walk and all the people opening the car doors on my child and me, parking on top of the, on the, on, on top of the sidewalks. I tried to walk my child to school, I couldn't do it, and I wasn't gonna send a little kid to school, you know, in that situation. And I don't think any of these parents here from Sarav, from, um, Serrano Elementary want their kids to walk to school either, for those entire reasons. Society has changed, they can't walk their kids to school. I, I agree with the first gentleman that spoke, OUSD has failed us, has failed everybody from the city of Orange to Villa Park, and it's just getting worse. And I came and I talked to you, you last week, because I wanted to find out what was going on, I'm like, "Why is the mayor saying that we need to be more courteous to the people in our neighborhoods?" I don't think people in Villa Park lack courtesy, we're very courteous people, we're kind people. I, these people that are talking, they're really upset, because they're, they're trying to live, and to say, "Move," or to say, you know, "You, you live by a school, so you have to deal with it," well, it's not really making, it's, it's not helping the children that are gonna get run over. It's not helping, and it's not helping the homeowners. I went with my, with my cellphone last Tuesday down to Serrano Elementary School, and I can tell you what I saw. I saw fourteen people making illegal U-turns, well, maybe they're not illegal, you have to tell me. Fourteen people making U-turns in the middle of Serrano Avenue during school dismissal. I saw one lady park for twenty-eight minutes, making a left-hand turn into Serrano when there was, there was parking in the Serrano lot. I saw one, I saw two, I saw a, a van, you know, like a, something, a delivery van, go on the left-hand side to get around her, at the same time another lady was going on the right. We had a perfect storm right there, if they had, you know, obviously they couldn't go very fast, so they didn't hit each other. So it's a US, it's a, it's an OUSD problem, let's fix it. And if we've got rules, let's, let's enforce them. You know, we've got, where is, I said, "Where's the police?", where are the police when there's gridlock for, there was a gridlock for eighteen minutes. Not talking about people all over the place running around, cars parked everywhere, people milling around, I'm talking about gridlock. And that's not safe for those children. It wasn't safe fifteen years ago, when I sent my daughter to that school, that's why I drove. And if we've got rules, let's enforce them, if we've got laws, let's enforce them, and if there's, the police are there, then, then they will be enforced. And if we have more parking, and if it means we have to make some decisions about parking, we have to make parking, but, you know, there's, we're coming to But, you know, there's, we're coming to you because you, you know, the people of Orange and the people of Villa Park, because there's a parking problem. Work together with the City of Orange to get it fixed. Don't make us feel like we have to fight each other. I like these people. They like me. Right?
Amen.
Okay. We like people from Orange. You know, the people from Orange like us. Don't put us in a position where we have to feel like we, we can't even smile at the people walking by. That's not right. I shouldn't have to go down there with my own phone to find out there's gridlock. You guys know there's gridlock? Then I gotta, what, then I gotta make an email? Then I gotta get an action committee together to figure this all out? Let's, you know, come on. Fix it for the kids. Fix it for the City of Orange kids, fix it for the Villa Park kids, all 9% that go to school here. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comments? Please.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is John Bogart, and I live at 9581 Feather Hill Drive. I've been a homeowner there for 25 years. One of the reasons I bought the house was so I could walk my child to school because it's a unique experience. I'm blessed to have a child that's going to Serrano right now. I walked into school every day when he was younger. I almost got run over twice two years ago before the parking restrictions. Me personally, when I'm walking with him and the neighbor boy, we had to call the police several times because people were indignant, yelling and screaming at us, waving to us to get out of the way of walking down our own street just to get to school with my son in the morning. To say it's a safety issue is an understatement. To say it's ridiculous is an understatement. To continue the parking restrictions indefinitely is what I ask you and urge you to do. My son played on Villa Park Little League, and I actually coached there. His mom commutes from Orange, and my ex-wife works for Orange Unified School District. So, I think I have pretty much every one of the vested interests covered somehow in my, my household. As I mentioned, safety is my number-one concern. I just don't understand how anybody can come stand out there and not see that this is an unsafe environment. As one of the neighbors earlier said, Orange Unified is a business, and if it was any other business and they didn't have adequate parking, one of two things would happen. We would tell them to get more parking, or they would come to us and ask for us to help provide more parking. To the best of my understanding, and I've been doing this meetings for four years, five years now, they've never come to us and said they need more parking to run their business properly. So, if the families that go there aren't happy with Orange Unified and the parking that they provide so they can get their kids in and out of school quickly, they need to complain to Orange. Orange Unified needs to work with the city, and they need to resolve how they have parking for their business. That's really where this is going. Instead, we have everybody here chewing each other up, household against household arguing, Villa Park Little League arguing with people that play for Little, the Little League. This is absurd. I've never seen anything like this. There's no way that the city council should ever approve anything other than this. There's three things that you should be there for. Number one is the safety of the public. That's our number-one concern. Number two is to increase the lifestyle that Villa Park stands for. And number three is by doing both of those to increase our property values. The actual arguments that are made by the people against the parking actually support all three of those goals. The first one, they say if there's more parking, then it'll be a safer place. Well, fine, put the parking away from my street because more traffic, as everybody said, is an unsafe environment, which makes my house an unsafe place. Number two, to increase my lifestyle, to allow my son to walk to school like people have asked to do, makes my lifestyle what I came and bought, a house in Villa Park, versus buying in Orange or someplace else and commuting to here. That's what I bought for, and that's what I paid for. So, that improves my lifestyle. And number three is that increases my value. The reason he's not here, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is because there's possibly a vested interest because Councilman Collicott lives on Feather Hill, and therefore if he votes for this, his property value might go up. Well, whoa, isn't that a surprise? I think that's what everybody wants here. So, why aren't we waiting till he gets back on in June when this, this rule changes? Or why aren't the four of you voting unanimously to approve this? Because that's what our goal should ultimately be, to have a better environment which ultimately increases the household values for our, our property. Two things I do find interesting is there seems to be two main proponents of, of changing this parking. And the first one is a young lady who started the petition at Serrano, but she doesn't even live in Villa Park. So, I find that, you know, if we wanted to do something in Orange, they wouldn't listen to us. So, why are we listening to someone that doesn't live in Villa Park? And why is she trying to rabble-rouse people and parents to get these things taken care of here? Number two, further, she wrote a letter to the, oh God, where was it? She wrote it to the Sentry, and she signed her name, but she signed it and said Villa Park. But she doesn't live in Villa Park, and if you carefully read it, she doesn't really say she lives in Villa Park now. Her mother does, as I understand it, but she does not. So, again, she's misrepresented herself, and finally, it appears she actually works for Orange Unified School District. So, I find those things kind of, kind of interesting. It was all...
Wait, 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 wait. Well, let him finish.
Finally, I understand that there's a, a young lady that also works for the Foothill Sentry in the Orange County Register, and I was advised that that person is actually related to one of the councilmen, but I don't think that that's been properly disclosed. And I would think that if this is a vested interest for possible gain of money, I would think that having someone actually get money into your household for writing about the same events is possibly the same kind of conflict of interest. And I would ask that that councilperson recuse themselves or wait until all the councilmen come back. Thank you for hearing me.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay.
If so, may I have the after? Thank you very much.
My name is Dr. Doe, and I live at 9641 Feather Hill Drive. My perspective on this issue is as a Villa Park resident and a parent of three school-aged children currently attending Serrano, CV, and Villa Park High while participating in various after-school activities. As such, I do have respect for OUSD, its dedicated teachers, and the many parent volunteers. Over the years, I've seen dramatic changes in our school population and its demographics, increasing the traffic burden on our residential streets. Unfortunately, there are no quick or easy solution to these long-term issues as we continue to work tirelessly to come to some resolution. Emotions are running high, as you can see tonight, but we need to remain logical and stick to the facts. As I mentioned at the previous council meeting, my main priority is for the safety of the children. Some parents speak of this concern, yet they continue to drive recklessly at illegal speed down our street, making rapid U-turns at street corners and across Serrano with their large vehicles, dropping off their kids at undesignated location as they're late to work without any care for other children's safety. While the OUSD has stopped the funding for bus transportation, they provide no relief from the increasing open enrollment and traffic issue. Although my kids and many others on our street, along with the children from Orange who use Feather Hill as a shortcut to the three schools, should be able to walk independently, I fear for their safety as we are forced on a daily basis to walk in the middle of our street. Prior to this parking ordinance now under review, we've had people blocking our driveway exit and causing property damage. It is a public record, as we have reported this to the Sheriff's Department, having to replace our mailbox twice. On one such occasion, to the dismay of the female police officer, a parent used our private circular driveway to make a U-turn in her presence. Regardless, property can be fixed, material goods purchased, but if my children were to be injured, as one is the same size as the mailbox, I ask you, city council members, can my child be replaced? Previous council members had acknowledged these safety issues at multiple meetings by voting in favor of this residential parking restrictions. In fact, after a comprehensive analysis involving the speeding abuse on Feather Hill, the City of Villa Park installed two speed bumps on Feather Hill in 2011. I understand there is a circulating petition initiated and signed mostly by Orange residents to remove the parking restrictions. Some stated the inconvenience and safety concern for their children as families are forced to park further and across high-traffic streets to access the fields. How would parking on our residential streets prevent crossing the high-traffic Serrano Avenue? The answer is simple. Park at the ample available parking lots of Saravilla. Then you would not have to cross any street at all. There are 104 parking stalls, which we have counted. Although the CV parking lots with at least three gate access on the same side as the field might be a one-to-two-minute healthy walk further than the direct gate access from Feather Hill across Serrano Avenue, it appears inconvenience trumps safety. The minor inconvenience and unhealthy attitude in refusing to walk another minute is an immense safety hazard that the residents endure on a daily basis. Others have voiced that residents should have known they were moving into a community with school and athletic fields in their neighborhood. Yes, as school-aged parents, we purchased our home for the very purpose of its proximity to the schools, expecting some traffic, but no, we did not sign to live in a commercial zone. Our non-sidewalk residential streets cannot accommodate for the commercial traffic or parking. Unlike other cities like Irvine, with its planned community and vast public land with designated parking dedicated for parks and recreational use, Villa Park is a small two-square-mile town with single-family homes and limited residential parking. OUSD has continued to allow for increasing after 4:00 PM events, Little League being only one of many activities within our city, without any care for the negative impact and unsafe consequences placed on the tax-paying residents of Villa Park. This traffic situation will deter future home buyers, depreciate our property value, affecting our city's reputation and esteemed small community. But there is a little silver lining, and I stand here before you, your prestige members of the council, to say thank you for listening and thank you for your dedicated community service. You're all volunteers, and I realize you're not paid. Since the implementation of this non-residential parking, our family has regained some peace of mind, once again feeling calmness and safe in our own home. And to answer your previous question, there is no negative impact I have seen on Serrano Avenue. If there were, it was just the adjustment to the light signal that was changed. As elected council member, you represent our Villa Park community.
Can you conclude?
Not the people of the neighboring city. Once again, I beseech you, our elected officials, to protect Villa Park's hidden jewel and safeguard our children, and to make this ordinance permanent. If a favorable decision cannot be reached, I request this issue be revisited in a later month when a full panel of council members present. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Doe. Oh, okay.
He was going to speak for me. I'm going to speak for myself. My name is Stacy Mice. I wrote the letter to the Sentry. It was my opinion, and I had every right to write to the Sentry. I sent the same letter to the council members. I did not misrepresent where I live. I believe that the newspaper printed Villa Park under my name. I never, ever have said I live in Villa Park, except when I did. I grew up in Villa Park. I grew up on Oakwood Circle. Oakwood Circle has the same exact issues. My parents' mailbox needed to be replaced several times. People pulled through their circular driveways, drove on their grass. They handled it on a case-by-case basis. They have never felt the need to privatize a public street. My position, my reason for parking on neighboring streets to my child's school is for safety reasons and to cut down on congestion. Our side would argue that these streets need to be remained in giving us public access for the same reasons that they're arguing, public safety and congestion. Congestion has gotten worse on Serrano since these restrictions have been put in place. And as far as Villa Park Little League, Feather Hill and Dodson have had a good thing going. They had no parking allowed on weekends. I don't see why they need to not be allowed to park, or Serrano, Saravilla, and Villa Park schools in general shouldn't be allowed to park on public streets. I just wanted to clear up mostly that I didn't misrepresent myself, and the paper has printed a retraction online, or a correction online, and it will appear in next month's issue of the Sentry. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I'm Dr. Vu. I live on Feather Hill Drive, and today I'm going to present facts, not emotion. I have taken over 87 pictures of the parking spaces available during, before pickup, around 7:30 to 8 o'clock, and then after school, and also during Villa Park Little League. So, I'm going to pass, this is my iPad. And I sent the pictures to the, the city council.
Is that what's in our PowerPoint? Okay, we, we have...
Only a small...
We have the pictures.
Yeah, only a small fraction. Okay. So, this is the CV. This is Serrano Avenue, and this is Nichols, and this is Santiago. There are three gate entries into the playground. One is right here on Nichols, and the other one is next to the school, and the premium is on Serrano Avenue. Because you have a batting cage right here, and then you have the fields right here. Everybody wants to park here. So, when they park here, there is a lot of congestion. So, the premium parking is, is at Serrano Elementary School and along the street. There are 104 parking spaces in these four parking lots. 28 here, 16 here, 18 here, and 42 parking spaces here. And, you know, I took pictures at 4 o'clock, at 5 o'clock, at 6 o'clock, at 6:30, and the only parking lot that is filled most of the time is the first one. The other three are never filled. I, in fact, on last Thursday, there were 72 available parking spaces. On Friday, there was 86 available parking spaces. On Saturday, there was 94 available parking spaces. And today, there were 62 available parking spaces. So, and I time myself to walk from here to here, or from here to there, it takes me less than two minutes, and I would not have to cross the street. So, to, the three Villa Park Little League board members say that there is not enough parking spaces, safe parking spaces is not true. There are plenty here, here, and here, and they would not, never have to cross Serrano Avenue. So, you know, I just want to present facts, and now I want you to take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on item six? Once I close the public comment, it's over.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Donna Buxton. I live at 9512 Dodson Way. The only thing that I want to add is that it's clear that this issue isn't going to be resolved here. It needs to be resolved with OUSD. This is their responsibility. The problem is bad. It's gotten worse. It's very unsafe. And I will quote one of the councilmen sitting there in a prior vote. He said, "The people have been through enough." And he approved the permit parking. This is the only relief that we have from the chaos and the unsafe conditions that continue to be unaddressed and continue to get worse. Thank you.
All right, we're going to close. We have, oh, yes?
Two. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman. My name is Bob Goldberg. I'm at 10882 Vita Drive, and I just wanted to clarify, we didn't have any games on Friday or Saturday of this week. Thank you.
No, no, sir. Sir? No. Ma'am? No. Thank you.
The pictures I sent is over three weeks period.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Susan Simpson, and at the risk of alienating my neighbors, which I don't want to do because I love them, I just want to share, I am one of the few at 9621 Feather Hill Drive that is opposed to the parking restrictions. As far as safety goes, I of course support the safety of our children. Even though I'm old and gray-haired, I have a kindergartner that's attending and one who will be attending in two years. I do walk them to school, walk him to school. I find that the safety concerns still remain because of the U-turns, the unsafe U-turns that occur right by that island. I find if people would go up the street further and turn around, they would have a clearer vision, but a lot of people don't take the time. I don't know, other than enforcement, how to get rid of that. I grew up in Villa Park, and I've always... will be attending in two years. I do walk them to school, walk him to school. I find that the safety concerns still remain because of the U-turns, the unsafe U-turns that occur right by that island. I find if people would go up the street further and turn around, they would have a clearer vision, but a lot of people don't take the time. I don't know, other than enforcement, how to get rid of that. I grew up in Villa Park, and I've always been a very hospitable person. I host a lot of things at my home. I personally find it burdensome to call City Hall every time I'm having an event in order to have people park on my street to attend an event at my home. They will not release enough parking permits for me to hand out to people or send them in my invitations. I have my dad who lives in Villa Park. I have elderly friends from church who live in Villa Park, who've lived here for years and years, who have to come out, get a, come in, get a parking permit, take it back, when I did have them. For those that don't, for instance, I work with a youth group at the church, and when they come and they park for the Christmas party, I have to say, ignore the signs about the permit parking. They won't ticket you because I called them. That flies in the face of what I teach them, to pay attention to the signs, the posted signs, and if everybody wants to keep the permit parking, so be it, but I would ask that I be able to have as many permits as I need in order to be able to host hospitably at my home. I do agree that there are still safety concerns for walking our children to school. And on that, I will rest. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause). Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public comment. We're going to bring it back to the council for discussion.
Who wants to start?
Well, I'll start because we've been in this business here for this parking now for two years. Deanna, Rick and I have been on the council. We did pass this temporary parking permits last fall. I think it's worked to a degree. There's obviously issues about it. It's saying, from all the things I hear tonight, it seems like we have a problem with the manners and the driving etiquette of many of the people that come into town, including people that live here, most likely too. I see people running stop signs all the time in town as well, but we're talking about children and vehicles that weigh over 2,000 pounds, basically. It's not a good combination. It is a difficult situation. We did advise the committee, and Mary Beth and Donna have been with this a long time on this, we have to get the attention of the school board and the school committees, and they've done that, because there's only so much that we can do once it leaves the chain-link fence of the schools. We are limited. There's laws that we have to allow them to do whatever they want on their property. We have no jurisdiction over there, except for the sheriff at the school. So there's a lot of complex issues here that are frankly really frustrating as well because it's been going on for, what, eight, nine years now? Or longer, actually? I don't know how we teach folks manners. I don't, I don't know. Maybe we have to yell back at them or something, but it's something that has gone down over time, I think. I think we've all seen that. But what can we do here for the residents of Featherhill and Dodson? Bryn Mawr is not part of this, that they are going to go it alone for right now, which is fine, too. I want to make those comments because there's been a lot going on here about this. Privatizing streets, there's lots of different issues to look at here, but I think we do have the attention of the school district now. They know there's a big problem here, and I think they know that there is a groundswell tonight and the previous two months, that something is going to happen here that's really going to impinge them. I think that's the message I hear tonight. And although we think it's unreasonable to a degree that we even have to do this, something has to be done, and that's what I have to say for right now.
What I've heard tonight is a lot of issues on traffic. I haven't heard what having permitted parking has done for the traffic, because it hasn't done anything, hasn't alleviated the traffic. It's most likely made it worse, but it hasn't alleviated. So we're just going, the whole reason we get, we needed permitted parking there was because of traffic, but the traffic is still going down these streets. It hasn't changed. Cars are allowed to park in front of your home unless you live on a private street. We may not like it. They're also allowed to turn in your driveway, although it may not be courteous, you don't want to see it, they're allowed to do it. And I get putting the trash cans in front of it. They're allowed to do it, though. We can't stop people's behavior of picking your avocados or picking your grapefruits or blowing up mailboxes, which there was one blown up on Santiago two weeks ago, which is nowhere near the school. I just, you know, Santiago Lamp lighter had a mailbox blown up. The traffic is a result of a city that is 52 years old and having three schools within, you know, a mile of each other. The planning was done back then, and there's nothing that we can do about that. It's what it is. You know, unless the laws are changed from the federal government that says that children who live in a demographic area where the schools are not as good, once, they have a right to go to these schools whether we like it or not. They have an open enrollment, and that's where the numbers have come from. That's where the things have to change. We have people from Orange who go to our schools because that's what their legal school is to go to. How do we stop them? They're not doing anything different. We have Ms. Mice here, which I didn't know until she wrote her letter. She sends her school to where she's supposed to. She's not open enrollment. What do you want her to do? We have to drop our kids off. We have to park if we want to go visit an open house. We have to park if we want to go into the classroom and read with the kids, or tend to the gardens, or paint, or build the handicap ramps, or paint the bathrooms, because OUSD didn't manage their money properly. We have such good schools and good scores because the parents that come to these schools routinely walk on campus and work at the schools. All right? Let's not lose that. Let's not lose what we have. Now, when it comes to manners, I'm afraid I don't have an answer for that. I just don't. But having restricted parking on these two streets has not assisted in any of the issues that we're talking about right now. Okay, they have not. So we have residents who have parked, who have painted their curbs red on these two streets. We have residents on Dodson who are using Serravilla's parking lot to park their vehicles also. So, which is not, would not normally be an issue.
What are you talking about?
Would not norm, would not normally be an issue. I don't think that this has solved the problem, but it's time to go to the OUSD board meetings and talk to the board. Don't talk to OUSD. Talk to, go, talk.
This is your job.
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me.
You said.
Excuse me, ma'am. If you're going to, if you're going to disturb the meeting, ma'am, we'll have to ask you to leave. Please stop. This council has several school committee meetings, and we also go to OUSD board meetings, but they also like to hear from the public. So the issue here, at issue here is that temporary parking was issued on Dodson and also issued on Featherhill from 7:00 to 7:00 at night. Prior to that, it was on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, and had been like that for years. So this temporary parking now is up for vote, whether to continue it, whether to make it permanent, whether to remove all parking completely, whether to put it back, and it's at the pleasure of the council here to make a motion based on what they want to do. There is an issue here about Mr. Colacott wanting to come back in 60 days to vote. There is an ethic issue here. When we become council people, we have to take ethics training, and the first thing that you're told is, if it doesn't smell right, you have a financial interest. And the public knows that from the beginning. Just because they made it legal for you to be able to vote, there still is an ethical issue whether or not you come back. This vote, if he is allowed to come back in 60 days, is, would be purely unethical for that to happen. Right? We don't make those rules. But we're all elected up here. The community elected us, and I think you need to have trust in the four people up here to do that. They're all independent voters. And I welcome the comments from the council and anyone who would like to make a motion.
I'd still like to be heard on this. In fact, I have a question before I want to like to say anything. Can somebody tell me, we've heard a lot of stuff about near collisions and problems on the streets, have we ever had, or in the last 10 years, have we had an injury accident on Featherhill or Dodson or Bryn Mawr?
Jared or Awkram.
Kids in these commutes? Been here for a lot of years.
I'll have to look into that. I don't, off the top of my head, I can't recall anything. Has there been one? Perhaps?
The traffic study.
You know, I'm willing to open it up to the sheriff or anybody in here. Is anybody aware?
The public comment's closed.
I realize that just because we haven't had one doesn't mean we can't have one, but is anybody aware of having an incident like that?
Rick?
Pardon?
Rick, the traffic study of 2011 is in here. And there isn't, there isn't anything in there.
Okay, all right. So nobody's aware of any of those? Okay, so that's just.
We don't want to open up public comment.
No, it's just a factor, it's just a.
Public comment's closed. It's closed.
Well, I did ask for if anybody was aware of.
We got it.
I don't want to have a discussion, I don't want to open discussion, I just want if anybody was aware of an injury.
Staff said no.
Okay, all right, well, maybe, maybe we've had something, all right?
Staff.
Excuse me?
There was a child that had an elbow fracture last year from a collision of a vehicle.
On a car?
Yes.
What street?
On Serrano.
Okay, so not on, not on a side street, and that may have gotten worse, but okay. All right, so that, I just wanted to get that out of the way because I've been sitting here thinking about that the whole time. So this, this is, I won't say it's easy, but it's not that complicated to get somewhere with this, maybe. I've been listening to this for years. There is no great solution to this. It splits the community, and everybody's got legitimate concerns. The schools jam the community. It's overloaded. This group's very unhappy because they're immediately affected by it every day, and the rest of the community's upset about it, perhaps not quite as much, because they don't have it quite as directly involving them, but it's a big inconvenience and a safety issue to some extent for the rest of the community. So there's no good solution here. I've been addressing this for years. When we, when we, when we, when we put this, this restricted parking on these streets, we also encouraged these streets to set up some committees, and we funneled them to OUSD where the problem really rests, in the hopes that some action would be taken, and I offered to assist. I don't know exactly what's happened, but certainly nothing objective has happened to date, and now the Featherhill group wants permanent restricted parking. I don't see any objective resolution with OUSD, and understandably, the rest of the community wants the streets back. So as a council member and a member of this community, I have no desire to take sides with one of these groups. Everybody's got legitimate concerns, and as we all acknowledge, the problem essentially lies with OUSD. So here's where I'm coming from. I now am going to go back and get involved and talk to the school superintendent who I discussed this with initially, and I thought there was going to be some action on it. I'm going to get involved myself to see if I can get something done with the school because I had meaningful discussions, but it seemed that it was going so well, I really expected that the groups that had formed would get something done, and they haven't. So I'm going to volunteer. I'll work with you, but I'm going to go call Mike Christiansen myself and try and get something done because this is ridiculous. Not going to have the community in a big brawl over this, and I don't, have no intention of picking sides here. So my position is, I would retain the status quo temporarily, and if there were no parking, if the parking restrictions were not in play, I'd probably leave it the way it is until we get a chance to deal with it. The restrictions are in play, the signs are up, they're in the concrete, so frankly, I'm not inclined to tear them down at the moment. And frankly, I don't have a problem with, with, with Councilmember Colacott coming in and voting on this later and having a full council. I think the issue, even though he's on the street, and has, and obviously has some bias, I think it's broad enough that it really, to me, it doesn't present a huge ethical issue, and apparently the Fair Political Practices Commission agrees, because they've restricted him, he can't participate now. They've changed it because I guess they feel it wasn't appropriate, and they're going to change it, and within a couple of months, apparently he can go back and vote. I really don't have a problem with that. I'm happy to have all the involvement, but it's not going to resolve the issue. It, you know, I don't think frankly it's going to probably change the outcome. So the bottom line is, we've got to, we've got to deal with OUSD, and this is dragged on forever. Now, if I have to come in and make a call between two sides of the community, I guess at some point I'll have to do it, but the thought gags me, and I don't want to do it. And I'm not going to do it unless I'm absolutely put in a box. So my suggestion is going to be here, you're going to, if there's a motion made, I'm going to make, you know, I'm going to make a supplemental motion that we kick this over for maybe six months and leave the parking in play, and I want to go address this with OUSD myself because this is ridiculous. And I know Mike Christiansen, he's a reasonable guy, and I think something could be done, and I'm prepared to vote for the expenditure of some city money, if that's what it takes, to participate with OUSD financially, to get some parking set up over there, mitigate this issue, and then get this resolved, because this is going nowhere. And I, and I refuse to drive a wedge between this community unless I absolutely have to. So that's where I'm headed. I would frankly move that we put this over for, and I'm flexible, but maybe six months or four to six months, leave it alone, and let's see what we can do with OUSD, and then come back and address it, and it's going to affect not only this issue, it's going to affect the striping issue. I can't see spending money on striping and starting another fight amongst the community until we know what OUSD is prepared to do. Then we can make some intelligent decisions.
Rick, could I make a suggestion to your, you haven't made a motion yet, but. I was thinking along the same lines about the, let it ride for six months or whatever, but I think we should make some compromise here. I think there should be unlimited permits for the people there, and they should be able to get, because when we originally made this temporary deal, the residents of those two streets said they would get permits for the Little League, and I don't think that's happened as much as they, we'd anticipated, and that was something that we had, we had, they said they would promise that they could do that, but I guess that's not the point. If, if we have unlimited permits for people, does that make a big deal? I don't know. I think we should also go to 7:00 to 3:30 PM. I think that's, that's reasonable, too, during the week. I mean, that's really what we're talking about, are people here that have been using those fields for over 50 years, and they're a vital part of our community, but it seems to me that, that would be a reasonable thing to do, if we could extend it, because it's going to take some time, even though Rick's right, Deanna's right, Bill's right. The source of the problem is there's a lot of parking spaces at those schools that's been taken up by temporary, yet permanent, classrooms, hundreds, and there's a lot of them there. And they, so that's part of the problem. It wasn't built that way. It's very apparent from some of the letters that I've got reading in here that, that there's about 220, 250 more kids than these schools were designed for, each of these schools, too. So with that in mind, what do you think about that?
I mean, I don't have a problem. I'm fine with that. I just don't intend to make this permanent, and I'm also not inclined to tear those signs out and throw it back the way it was, so that, that's fine with me. I just, I just want a chance. It's obvious nobody else is getting this done, so I'm going to take a shot at it myself.
I have a comment, I will. I have a comment here. I think we have, first of all, I disagree with you. It is not, when it comes to Mr. Colacott voting, this is a larger issue than parking on Serrano. It is not our job, or our city attorney's job, or our city manager's job to find a way to allow a councilperson to vote on an issue. That in itself is unethical, beyond belief, and for us to sit here and to be able to discuss that is wrong. We should not be looking for ways to get one of us to vote a certain way. That's the kind of politics we hate, you know, up in Sacramento. Second, when we made this temporary, we had a lot of discussion, but nothing's ever temporary, and that's what it's turning out to be. I think that we're putting a lot of blame on OUSD, but we're talking about private parking on two Villa Park streets. And you know what? We have people who live on Santiago, who live right next to, right next to the high school. They'd like to see no parking in front of their house, too.
But there's parking permit on Westwood.
On Westwood. Let's see, we've got, we have people here who wrote us from all over Villa Park and who signed the petition from Villa Park who don't. Park, and who signed the petition from Villa Park, who don't like the private parking. And I don't think that this council is looking at the opinion of the people who live in Villa Park either, that there is public funds that is being used for two streets, and I'm just asking you to consider it.
I want to make it clear, as far as my proposal, it has nothing to do with Councilman Colacott's ability to vote or not vote. I expressed my personal opinion on it, and because of the underlying issues, I don't think there's any ethical concerns there, whether it's continued or not, and I don't have a problem with it. That has nothing to do with the continuance. That would be a fortuitous, you know, coincidental result. I merely want it continued so that I can address the issue with the OUSD, so we don't split the community.
I think it's a continuous, because nobody wants to take a position, and we're in a position, unfortunately, that is unpopular. There are two sides, and one side is not going to like the decision that we make-
That's right.
Regardless of the decision. And kicking it down the way is not going to change that.
We may not have to address-
A couple of things, I want to comment on Colacott's issue. In my understanding, Ms. Mayor, was not anyone was going out trying to find a way for him to vote. It was just because the FPPC, which you indicated, is one of places that we have to be in compliance with their standards. They made a change in their rules that allow him to vote, and it's just that the rules are not final yet. Then in the past time, it was a rule, so we properly did the thing, and we excluded him. And now, if it's going to allow him to vote, it's only a reasonable thing to allow him to vote on it.
I don't find that reasonable, I find that unethical.
And I don't find unethical that they changed the rules. That's essentially what happened, they changed the rules. As far as this whole thing, I think the whole issue is related to Orange Unified School District. They have made this issue, you know, and it tears me up, and it tears the city up here, when it's really Orange Unified School District that's caused this. We should be looking at them for solutions. Those of you that are here tonight, talking to the council about finding solutions, I hope that you also go to Orange Unified District and tell them to find solutions, because they created the problems. They created the problem by overcrowding the schools, by reducing busing, by all the things that they have done, you know. So I think you should look at them for solutions as well. I would support a decision to kind of add it down, four to six months down the road, for Barnett to take a look at some issues and try to get some resolution from the school, because that's where the real, that's where the real solution's going to come from, Orange Unified School District, not from the city of Villa Park. That's where they're going to come from.
Well, when we formed committees, the reason Colacott and yourself were put on the school committee is because you wanted to take on OUSD. We didn't put Rick on the school committee because that was your statements-
Yes.
So-
The problem I have-
What's going on?
It's not my position, okay?
Yeah, to hell.
Well, look, if Rick is going to volunteer, I'm not going to stop.
Yeah, I'm volunteering.
You're giving it up?
This either has to get resolved, or I'm going to have to make a decision and pick sides between two community groups that both have legitimate concerns. And I'd rather go have a conversation with Mike Christiansen, who frankly is a very reasonable guy, and I'd much rather go deal with Mike before I have to make this decision.
What two community groups? It's two streets, it's two streets versus the city of Villa Park.
A lot of people on those streets are-
Alright, excuse me, excuse me, the council is discussing.
There's a lot of people on those streets with legitimate concerns. But, we got a lot of other people with legitimate concerns, may not be quite as heavily impacted, but they're still affected, and there's more of them. So, it's a balance. And, you know, if I have to, I'll make a call, but it's not something I want to do. This has gone on for years, it's gone on before you were here, because it's such a difficult decision. So, you know what, I'd rather go talk to Mike and carry on there a bit, before I have to make this call and alienate a group of the community. That's my position, so you guys can do whatever you want, but that's where I'm headed.
You're kicking it down the road.
Make it shorter then.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
We don't have a motion.
I know.
Well, I'd like to make a motion then. I'd like to make a motion that we delay this for six months to allow Councilman Barnett to work with Orange Unified School District to try to find some solutions.
Second. Got a motion in a second.
Six months from now would be October-
And then I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
Wait, didn't you just second?
Yes.
I can do that.
He can do that.
Yes, I can. I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue what Councilman Nelson just mentioned, plus I'd like to consider the unlimited parking permits on those streets for the residents, and also I'd like to change the hours of the limits to 3:30 or 4 o'clock.
You know, in regard to that, if I could maybe make a suggestion, I don't know if this is a big issue or not, but I don't know if we have anyone that has any, well, they probably have access to the school if they have disabilities. So I was just thinking to open a vehicle to allow parking on those streets by certain persons, maybe that have a pressing need that can go to the-
If you have a handy card packer, you can park on those streets regardless of a permit.
It's going to get too complicated, so I take it back.
Yeah, but I think a lot, to get a permit every time you have more than three people at your house, I think that is a real little ridiculous. But they should be able to have, give out permits for your, if you live on that street. Obviously, you'd be taking it up with your neighbors anyway, if it gets too onerous.
The staff has been burdened with requests, and it's hard.
That may be a nightmare administratively to handle that, is the only problem. It sounds like it's being resolved, because we've got one person that's raised that, she calls the city and they back off. It sounds like it's probably working, if it's not, I would support your position.
There's a couple of issues. One is, yes, whenever there's a wedding or a Super Bowl party, we'll waive the parking restrictions on the street for that event. It's happened before several times. The second issue is, the Villa Park Municipal Code states that only four permits shall be issued to one dwelling unit, and then eight guest permits will be issued, so 12 per property essentially. We'll have to have a code amendment, you know, in parallel with this decision.
From a practical standpoint, are we able to just relieve them for the evening when we have a big event?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
It seems to me that we're complicating it, Greg, if we do that. It looks like it's kind of working anyway. You can always address it again if it's a big problem.
Yeah, and Greg, changing hours, wouldn't we have to change the signs out?
We'd have to change the signs.
Let's change the signs.
You can put a sticker.
Put stickers on them, that's all you do.
Stickers on them.
Is that your substitute motion?
That's my substitute motion, but I don't have a second.
Why don't you just limit it to that then, Greg, just to the hours? Just make it supplemental as to the hours.
Okay, I'll supplement just to the hours.
Continue at six months, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Is it better 3:30 or 4:00?
Four, four. Let's go for four.
It doesn't matter, we don't have any.
Can I make a supplement to his supplement?
Four is just easy.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. One less sticker.
Okay.
Close enough.
Who's our second? I'm sorry.
Am I die?
Wait, okay. Can I make a supplement to his supplement, or do I have to?
No, you can.
There wasn't a second on that.
Is that how it works?
Without, it's not-
I propose to put the parking back to having the no parking only on Saturdays and Sunday, and to removing the restrictions Monday through Friday.
Now, are we back to the main motion?
Back to the main motion because, yes, Mayor Protem Mills did not receive a second on a substitute.
Okay.
You know, I'll second his, I'm sorry, I'll second that motion.
I forgot what it was.
So, the motion is to continue it for six months, but change the 7:00 PM restriction to 4:00 PM. So, no parking on Featherhill, Mountain View, and Dodson.
Mountain View is a private school, I mean, a private street.
Yeah, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, seven days a week. Parking permits, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, seven days a week.
You know, that's, I missed, I just didn't get all that.
No, I, no, my-
Where there's some confusion here.
He's confused as to what. My motion was to go back to how it originally was, which they have no parking on Saturday and Sunday, no one can park there. And Monday through Friday, it's open.
But you did not get a second, so it's immaterial.
No, no, Rick was asking what it was.
What it was, okay.
The comment I got here, I thought it was the other way. I thought I misunderstood her, and that she was proposing to have it open on the weekends and just restrict it during the week.
No, no. I'm putting it back, my motion is to put it back where we started, which is where it was for, what, 12 years, 10 years, however long they had it. That's how it was.
The original parking restrictions was about halfway up Featherhill, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays.
Right, and I'm, my motion is to put it back where it was, originally.
That did not receive a second.
A second.
So where are we now? Are we on the?
So we're on the substitute, which was Mayor Protem Mills' motion to continue parking restrictions as is for another six months, but changing the 7:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
I seconded that one.
Yeah. So it'll be no parking, parking by permit only, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, seven days a week. And we'll hear it again at the October 27 city council meeting.
We can bring it before, if we get some resolution though, right?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, it's a lot, this is a lot of burden on the city, a lot of burden on the staff. You have a school, so, which is getting ready for graduations, getting ready for a tremendous amount of festivities that this community participates in, and you have calls coming into our limited staff to give them extra parking permits, to cover up the signs, to make sure the sheriff knows not to ticket them. And just, I want to make sure that everyone up here is aware of that, because they get the phone calls to do that and to administer this. It's a lot of work, okay? And we're spending public funds for two streets.
Could we call for-
Something, nothing's temporary.
A vote on the substitute motion. Mayor Protem Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Barnett.
Yes.
Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Fastinelli.
No.
The motion carries three to one. So we'll review it in October, if not early.
Okay, Rick. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to this.
Yes.
We are on to item number seven, consideration of Serrano Avenue Restriping Traffic Plan.
Got to get Mr. Colacott.
Come back?
All that food, it's gone.
That food, we're all gone, you'd be in an ambulance on your way to the ER.
We're on a break.
Oh, cool.
Oh, we're on a break.
Yeah, Jared's not here.
You can say all you want right now.
I want to say all you want right now.
What the hell you want right now?
It's a group of the PFSOs, myself, Akram, some of the residents on Featherhill, Dotson, and then the superintendent and assistant superintendent.
We should have a list of who's on this task force since we don't know who it is.
Sure.
Sitting here on the council.
And a couple of council members also attended.
And council members too, but it's not, this is not a city sanctioned.
It's not official city committee.
Okay, so you just.
It's not, it's more of a, it's more of a community task force.
Formal working group.
It's an informal group, and so in the future, if we, if we could do that, just to make sure that we know. I mean, I don't know if this is an, what kind of a group this is.
I agree, if you don't know who that is, you should know who it is.
Right.
Bill, are you on?
Yeah.
Okay. So just you?
This is not a group that we've done.
Bob's not on, yeah, Bob's on.
He just said he wasn't on, you are.
I guess I'm his, I'm his assistant.
Thanks.
But this.
You both are on.
But it's not associated with the city, it's just a bunch of residents that have gotten together, okay?
It's, 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 it's some residents.
That's good, so we should know from now on, just so we know what's going on.
I agree, you should know who that is.
All right, I'm gonna open up public comment on this issue, and I have Donna Buxton.
Good evening, council members and mayor personnel. I don't know if you've heard, we have a traffic problem. So, council member Barnett, you mentioned in our prior agenda item that nothing has come out of our work in trying to move OUSD. This is probably the strongest thing that has come out of those sessions with them. Okay, so I just want to be clear on that. Additionally, with regard to members on the task force, I thought those members were listed in the task force documents that survey that was distributed, that has been distributed a couple of times to you.
We don't have those documents?
Documentation.
No, it's not, it's not there.
It's not in this one.
That hasn't come to all the council?
At one point, we did list all of the entities and the members that were participating in that task force. So, it may, well. Okay. Okay. So, this is, came out of the Featherhill and Dotson Way group. We are not interested in only our own interests on our streets. We have worked very hard to try to improve the entire area for everyone, okay? So I just want to make that real clear. This is the, the best option that has come forward from that work, and it is the one thing so far that truly will move traffic through the area safely. It will enable cars to turn left and for other cars to be able to travel through safely, and we have not had that before. It will help to alleviate the blockage right in front of Serrano Elementary School. As I said, it will, it will enable cars to move through, and the downside is that we will have to remove some parking, but the question that you have to ask is what's more important, safety or being able to move cars safely through the area? And I think that you'd be hard pressed to find somebody who thinks that parking is more important than being able to safely travel through the area. So I guess that's, that's the only points that I have on that.
Thank you. Is Mary Beth still here?
No.
Okay, all right. Brad Etter?
Good evening again. So let me see if I understand this, where the staff has based a recommendation on a report largely prepared by the same residents on these streets who are concerned about parking on Featherhill and Dotson. That seems very unbiased, I'm sure. I can't tell you the percentage, because I've got to go out there and measure it, but I would guess, taking away that parking from Villa Park Little League would probably be about 20% of our parking and the top parking. That's a problem. As a resident and a parent of two children that ride bikes all over the city, the thought of removing bike lanes from one of the busiest streets in this city in front of a school is crazy. Makes no sense. It's a, we've been talking about safety all night, that's a big one. We want to take away parking here, let's open it up on Featherhill. You can't take it everywhere, you gotta give us something somewhere. And you guys want to go back and put this on OUSD, that's fine. Let's not forget, we are guests of OUSD on those fields. They don't have to give us our permit to play baseball like they have for 51 years. If it's a problem and they're tired of hearing about it, guess what? They don't issue the permit. And the largest youth-based sport we have in this city is done, and that would be on you guys. Think about that.
Any other public comment, please?
Hi, my name is Nikki Crepp. I am the incoming PFO president for Serrano Elementary. I am also on the task force committee. We've spent a lot of time, countless hours, doing this, and as Donna said, this is one of the most reasonable plans for safety issues. But like Brad said, it has to, you have to give somewhere. If you are gonna take all the parking on both sides from Santiago to Featherhill, you have to open Featherhill and Dotson, there's just no ifs, ands, or buts around it. There's no, I mean, Serrano only has a certain amount of parking in their lot, other than that, and Saravilla has a couple, but other than that, it's, it really is like ample parking for the community. Also, everyone is sitting here blaming OUSD. It's not just OUSD, it's, we have tried numerous different ways to eliminate the traffic and the congestion, and that we, we also have to put some blame on Orange the City. They're refusing to get lights when we had a certain, we wanted a left-hand turn lane, they will not do it because of cost issues. There was also another proposal to do a parking lot on the back of Serrano and open a gate through Meats to go parking through there. The city will not do a light there either, plus OUSD cannot buy the land there. There's just a lot of things to consider before you approve the striping. The parking on the two streets needs to be uplifted, and that is including weekends. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Gonzalez. I have two children that attend Serrano, and one of them gets out at two, my kindergartner, and one of them gets out at 2:25. Now, if you do not want us to park on those other two streets and you're gonna red stripe that one, where do you suggest we park? Where will I park? That red stripe, that's where I park. I get my daughter, and then we wait for my son. Where do you think we're gonna park? Where? I don't know where else we're gonna park. If we go park a couple of streets down, then you're gonna have those neighbors complaining, like one of the other residents was saying. So right now, I understand that it would move traffic better, that's a great plan, but you have to open up the other streets, but you can't close everything down. I heard somebody was saying they were supposed to park at Ralph's. So you want our kids to get out of school being tired and then come walk all the way over here to Ralph's? It's not, it's not acceptable. When you moved to that area, you knew there was one, two, three schools. You knew that. You bought a house and you knew there was schools around. So if you do not want to deal with the problems, you probably should look somewhere for somewhere else to live, because the kids go to that school. What do you want us to do? I'm not gonna pull up and drop my kindergartner off. I want to get off and walk my daughter to school. I'm not gonna just toss her out of the cart. I volunteer at the school, I'm there, I'm a little nervous of part of me. I'm there very often, and I come in and out because I do errands for the teachers, I work for the third grader and the kindergartner, and if you want me to park in Ralph's, how am I gonna get anything done? And I think we all help out, most of the parents there help out, and we're not trying to be bothersome to the neighbors, and I understand their concerns, you know, it would be annoying. But when I drop off my daughter, when I, we pull up at the school, by 8:05, there's hardly any cars in sight. When I get there early, at 7:45, sometimes I've got there early because I need to handle something or help the teacher out with something, there's no one in sight. At 7:50, of course there's traffic, everybody's dropping off their kids at 8:00 AM. By 8:05, they're gone. Who wants, people have places to go. Parents are going to work, everybody has their own big deal, but they have to go to drop off their kids, then afterwards free. After school, they're there to pick up their kids, and then they leave, they're not hanging out there. It's not our little Starbucks break, we go pick up our kids and then we go where we need to go. We're not there all day long, we're there to pick up our kids and then leave, we're not camped out. So for you to say, we're gonna take that area out, then the two streets, you tell me where am I supposed to park to take my kids to a school? Any suggestions? And the comment that you said, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to address it. You said, if we change the rule about him voting, then it would be unethical. Just because you change a rule does not make it ethical. Do you understand that? Do you follow that?
No, I, I don't, I don't understand it. If it's ethical, it's ethical.
It's unethical for him to vote on that other deal, it's just, it is. And for you to say, just because we changed the rule, it doesn't automatically make it ethical. It's just logical.
The rule made it unethical, so when you change the rule, it makes it unethical.
No, rules don't make things unethical, things are unethical because they're unethical.
When we say, I understand, I understand your term about something being ethical.
It's unethical for me to steal, but it's not a rule that's in place, it's just unethical because it is.
They'll, they'll let us, let us speak and talk after.
Did you understand the logic behind that?
No, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
You don't, okay, I'll tie it up then.
No, I don't.
I'll tie it up.
No.
Anyone else would like to speak on the item?
Just one little clarification, the school did open up some parking in the back of the school to offset the loss of parking here in front.
How many spaces?
It's always one.
It's always the same.
Always.
Okay, all right, that's okay, that's right. I don't have, any, any other? Of course you may, please. Your name?
Kristy Bliss, and I'm an unbiased opinion, because I live on Briely Way, and I only get affected by this when I make the mistake of going that way during school hours. And I totally sympathize with everyone, because it is a long wait, and I see the whole picture. So an unbiased opinion to me is looking at this, because I don't see any solution on either side, because there's no space anywhere. That school has so much field space. Why is it not that there is a parking lot put on all that extra field space right along Saravilla? I mean, uh, Serrano. That would make the most beautiful parking lot, and none of you would be at odds like this. And that is just sitting here watching all this tonight going, the solution is the free land to make parking. Hallelujah.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Yes, thank you.
Maybe just recommend to stagger the scheduling?
No, they won't do it.
Okay, no, well, if, if.
They won't do it.
Public comment? Would you like, would you like to speak? Okay, thank you. Tell us your name.
Ryan.
Ryan?
Yeah, I play at that Little League field, and for like her to put the parking there, that's where the fields are. So if you were to put parking there, you'd be taking out the fields.
Well, no, let him, let him speak, thank you for coming up, please, go ahead and speak.
It's like, because there's not really anywhere to put parking onto the grass. Teams practice on the track, and there's no place, or like no space on the other field.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Lot of courage for somebody that age to come up to the podium, thank you. Very nice. All right, I'm gonna close public comment on this, bring this back to seven. Oh, we have more, I'm sorry. That, the blue cards are quite helpful, because I can see who's here.
My name is Heidi Myrena, and I'm a resident of Orange. As many of you know, on this city council, the problems in the traffic at Serrano has been a passion of mine ferociously since 2011. I will be at Serrano until 2021. Some of you will be there after me, hear me out. I've worked with many members of the city of Villa Park, I've worked with members of OUSD. I have spent countless hours away from my family, which my husband will attest to, sitting at Orange City Council meetings, sitting at Villa Park City Schools meeting, sitting with Donna Bruckston, Nikki Crepp, Heather Colter, Leno Day, at this Hidden Jewel Committee meeting, trying to come up with solutions to protect our children. We enforce to our children in kindergarten, manners matter. It's very disheartening to hear that the neighbors do have issues. We see those parents, we understand that. We cannot fix manners, unfortunately, as we've discussed. But what we do need to address is the safety of our children. Akram and I have talked about this many years ago. We have set up cones trying to create tentative lanes. I was a big proponent of this. Now, they suggest taking out part of the track to create, you know, there have been talks, create parking. However, as you mentioned, you know, the parents do volunteer. That same track that you want to remove is the track that helped take 250 students to the Foundation Games from Serrano Elementary to bring you our 10th straight year championship that, as Foundation Games, that we worked on, on that track. Where would you have those students go? You like the accolades that Serrano has, you like the education we provide, you like that we are a top functioning school. It's because people work together. There has to be a way that we come together as a community. I was a big proponent of this, the restriping. Akram will tell you, this was the same will that we've been on, Akram, what, back in 2011, you and I? The problem I foresee with it now is because of the restrictions that have been placed on Featherhill. Dotson so much does not affect Serrano, Featherhill directly impacts us. Because of the restrictions that have been placed on there, it puts the wonderful people I've brought in to be traffic volunteers, and we have created a very smooth running wheel. We have had signs placed at the intersection of Santiago and Serrano. We have had signs placed prohibiting, prohibiting traffic from turning left. We've worked with the city to widen the driveway, correct Jared? OUSD has changed our parking lot. We are still making changes within our parking lot to do what we can to be a smooth running wheel that brings our parents in and out. We have been timed, and we've had our parking lots cleared in the afternoon in 17 minutes. Yet I've been told that wasn't good enough. As volunteers, as parents, we don't know what more we can do. Now you want to take more parking away. Again, as people have said, where do we go? We said in a meeting, we talked about this. You're taking approximately 24 to 30 parking spaces, depending on your vehicle size. If you do red curb this, that is another issue. Where do those parents go? Where do we safely drop our children off? We talked in our committee meeting, this traffic force task meeting that we've had. We did, we spoke to Mary Beth, we said, this looks like a very positive, and I know Donna will agree, this looks like a feasible solution that will make a change, can make a difference, and flow traffic through and get them out of the city, get them back on to Santiago, get the parents where they need to be for work. But in that meeting, we said, we're willing to work, we're trying to do this, we're doing the things we can. Would the Featherhill residents be willing to work with us? And her reply was, I don't know, but it would be something I would have to go back and ask them, but it could be a possibility. That possibility has been taken away. Now we have nowhere to go. If we're to work hand in hand, I ask you to consider what we can do to find parking now. Now that we have been prohibited on this street, on that street, and now on Serrano. Please consider where we go for the safety of our children. I've worked too hard with so many countless people, wonderful volunteers, who take time every morning to protect our children. The same children that you are telling us to protect. What can we do together? Think about it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I'll volunteer to start this one. I really like this, but I, I think it's got some problems, but I really like it. However, I would ask that council kick this over for at least a month, so that I can go talk to my Christiansen, because I don't want to spend $20,000 or $25,000 doing this, to find out that we're gonna make some parking change here, and all of a sudden, this flow doesn't make any sense anymore. So I would like to brief you, if I'm gonna talk to the OUSD, I would like to talk to them without having spent $25,000 bucks striping this, and then realizing that if I make a change, I've wasted the 25 grand. So even if it's brief period, so be it, so, subject to whatever comments we've got, I'd like to move to kick this over for at least 30 days, so that we can have some discussion first.
I have a, on a question for the city attorney, excuse me, Bob. Is Mr. Colacott allowed to sit in on this and to vote on this issue? Because the traffic obviously has been proven to diminish the value of the homes, which is what was discussed about last time, so a little clarification, so that we have an idea of what's going on.
Yep, Madam Mayor, the city manager and I discussed this, and his property is greater than 500 feet from the designated area, and under the FPPC regulations, 500 feet is what we would look at for the conflict in this scenario.
So legally, legally, he can do it?
So legally, he can participate.
Ethically, maybe not, and I don't mean that bad.
Wait a minute.
But, well.
Doesn't somebody have children going to Saravella, and don't you have a conflict?
I have no conflict. I don't complain about the parking. I don't complain.
But you're gonna be affected by the traffic and so forth.
I'm not affected at all. I've got three kids, I take them early, Bob, I've not complained about the parking in 10 years. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I have a comment about this, this plan, I, I do agree with Rick, we need to kind of look at this a little more. This is our first really good look at it. I'm still thinking that, I don't understand why we really, is there some other way we can direct the traffic for this 30-minute time period? To use the sidewalks or whatever, I mean. Fires on the curb or something, I mean.
Removing the bike, removing bike lanes.
I'm talking about not removing the bike lanes, that's what I'm talking about.
That's huge.
Not removing all that stuff, is there some other way around it? And I, I'm sure that Lieutenant Gunzle can take a peek at this and, and take a look, because it's such a short period of time during the day, we don't want to take the parking away on this street. We want to open up this Serrano street for parking, I mean, as, there's, there's a flow. There's high pressure, low pressure, high goes to low, so it, there's something has to happen here. Now, now, the, the other issue that can happen here is with OUSD, we'll take away some of the temporary classrooms they have, and go back to the, go back to the parking that was once there on both schools. And, and there's a lot of parking there, a whole bunch. Now, what they have done in fairness, for a while, they were, they were locking the gates over on CV. But now they open them every day, so people can park there, so that's been an improvement. But there's also parking where the basketball courts are, but there's some problem with that, because they have to add asphalt.
That's a PE area.
Yeah, so there, there are issues, and maybe there is a way, Rick and Bob, that we can work with Mike on all this stuff. Because they, we, we can, as it is here, we're, we're spending all the money. The school district's not spending a dime on this.
Well, nobody's spending anything yet, but, you know, I, I mean, I've got some ideas, and I actually discussed some tentative ideas six months or a year ago with him, but I can tell you that the ideas that I have in mind will impact this. So I, as much as I like that, I think it makes sense. But if we do any of the stuff I'm thinking about, it's gonna mess it up, and, and we'll have just wasted our time and money.
I'm thinking about not messing it up much, and figuring out a way to make sure that there's safety access at any moment of the day. That's really the biggest issue here, is the safety access. Because these three streets and up, up on Mark and Nichols, the same thing, people, you know, vehicles have to get down there, especially emergency vehicles, or if you just gotta take your mom to the doctor all of a sudden, or whatever it is, it just doesn't, there's gotta be some way to reasonably do this. And I think the PFSOs have done a great job at these schools, by the way. So they've done a miraculous job in working with that and, and the street committees, so I think they've done a great job.
I'm, I'm against anything that is going to remove a bike lane. This, this council has worked for the last two years promoting people getting on their bikes. In fact, two weeks ago, we had, I had a bike rodeo with OCTA, and they all came out here. Jared was there, you two were there. The whole reason is to promote the bike routes. And we've been working on them in the community development group that we were in. So to remove a bike lane, go, it just throws everything away. This is a school, we have a problem, 15 minutes in the morning, 15 in the afternoon. You don't remove bike lanes that this entire city can use, and the community of Orange, for 15 minutes in the morning, 15 in the afternoon. So whether you talk to Mr. Christiansen or not, that is a, just.
Let me clarify.
But that's what's been brought to us, yeah.
I understand, I just want to clarify. When I asked that we put this over, so I could look at the other, I like this flow idea, okay? I don't, I don't really want to see the bike lanes go away either, okay? But one of the things I'm thinking about is taking some land here, and I would like to see the bike lanes preserved as well. But I just really don't want to deal with any of this and waste time on it until we have a chance to look at it and see what's gonna happen, because this may be a completely different issue. So why waste a lot of time dealing with this if maybe we can get another, another plan in and preserve all of this? So I, I just don't want to, I just don't see a point, if we're gonna continue it, I don't see any point, you know, point in wasting time discussing it, because we may come back with something different.
So you've got a motion?
Well, well, before, before you, before you make your motion, one of the things I know is that, that this task force has spent a lot of time, you know, looking at a lot of different alternatives, try to come up with, with this proposed alternative here. While two, I don't like taking away parking, I don't like taking away bike lanes, but this is the best thing they could come up with to propose for now. And with my great confidence in Rick, I'm gonna say, maybe we should defer the month and allow him to take a shot at the superintendent. I'm, I'm okay with that. But other than that, I, I like the plan, I think it's one way that's gonna help to improve traffic. But as, all the alternatives they had, all of them had downsides. You're not gonna find any that doesn't have some downsides.
Well, I'm, that's great, but as a council here, we've never seen, we have not seen this, the work from the task force. All we have here is three pieces of paper. How, maybe if we had seen it, we wouldn't have to kick it off.
Well, maybe if they, if they had brought, if they had brought you the full study, that showed you all the different alternatives that they looked at, maybe that would have.
I mean, we've been, we've been on this council now for a couple, you know, of years, just, if I'm not on the committee, I still, I still look at issues, even though I'm not on that force, I still look at issues, I think it's my duty. I'm just wanting, where is it? I got a $23,000, I got a $23,000 proposal here with two pictures.
Well, I think, my understanding, it was brought to the Community Development and Public Safety Committee.
I understand, but.
This, this item was, the, the task force study is in the agenda item number six, so the prior item, 35 pages.
I thought that was the, protecting the Hidden Jewel Committee.
It's one of the same names.
Okay, all right, then, then we need a legend, so we know who's who.
You know, if, if you look at this, and I don't, I don't want to spend a bunch of time on something that may change, but if you look at this, it, it really facilitates the flow, but there just isn't enough room for a bike lane. But, so, you know, if, if press, push comes to shove, we'll have to make a call on traffic efficiency versus bike lanes. But let's, let me meet briefly with OUSD and see if we can come up with something that solves some parking problem too.
If I may, I'm, I'm not an advocate, and I'll never lobby to remove bike lanes. In this situation, the flow will increase, in my opinion. Bike lanes, cars are queued up in them already, cars are parked in the bike lanes already, so they're basically not existing.
Not existing.
They're on the sidewalks anyways. So it does kind of make sense to get rid of the bike lanes, because they're riding on the sidewalks. That dedicated right-hand turn lane, folks are already stopped and standing in it to make a right-hand turn into the parking.
But for 15 minutes during the morning and 15 in the afternoon, and this city lives 24 hours a day. We don't live for those 15 minutes.
True, true.
That, so that, that's why, yes.
And I get, I mean, there's, there's more traffic in the half hour, you know, pickup and in afternoon. So you probably could ride your bike down the street, no problem, undefeated, um, you know, off hours. You won't have a dedicated bike lane, but you will still be able to literally ride on the street.
I'm gonna try to get some more land, so maybe we can get anywhere.
The park, the Little League parking is the biggest concern, because now you're planning them further down Serrano, up Brenmark, you know, around the corner on Nichols, Oakwood, Mark. That's the biggest concern, because you do lose, you know, the, on the south side here, from, I guess, you know. from, I guess, you know, the track, the first home, all the way up to the hay, thirty spots.
I'm going to make a motion for this...
We just gave them spots on Feather Hill and Dotson though.
Enough of Little League.
No, we did, took four times.
I'm going to make a motion here...
But not on Saturdays.
To...
Why is it different on Saturdays?
Reject this.
All day, James.
And have you go back to the task force and Christensen and your gurus and try and figure something else out, but as this is written, I'm going, I make a motion to, to not go forward with it, not to kick it off, to not go forward with it and come up with a plan based on your volunteerism.
Right, I mean, I'd like to see it trailed, so whoever makes a motion, the other one can make a substitute and we'll figure out what to do with it. You want me to make the, you want me to make the first and then you can give the substitute?
So, motion to table it?
I move, I move we kick it for...
Motion to table it, last second.
Thirty, thirty days.
I second it.
Thirty days, yeah, thirty days, yeah.
Okay, I move we kick it for thirty days.
Okay.
Now, you want to make the substitute?
And my substitute motion is to deny it in its entirety and come back with something I can go so far, I can go so far as to say that the money's not in our budget.
Second to Dina's.
Dina's?
I seconded Rick's.
Rick's.
In my motion, so much is that we do not have this in our budget and secondly, the council hasn't been versed into the task force and its findings.
No second for the subsequent motion, so the motion on the table with the second is Councilman Barnett's to continue it for thirty days.
Okay.
Can we call for the question then?
Call for the vote. Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Fessinelli?
No.
Motion carries for the one.
All right, number eight, we're there. We're there. Thank you for everyone's patience.
Okay.
And participation. Very good. All right, we are on agenda item number eight, Pilot Project Preliminary Utility Undergrounding Study, Valley Drive from Center Drive to Saravella Drive. When you're ready.
This item was continued from the last meeting.
Okay, all right, I'm going to open up public comment here and Jack Farrar.
My name is Jack Farrar, I live at nine-one-three-two Aubrey Circle. And I understand that this is just for a study?
Correct.
And who's going to pay for the study?
It is for this, yes, that is correct. It is for a fifteen thousand dollar consultation.
And who's going to pay for the study? The people who want the power lines or the city going to pay for it?
The city.
That's the proposal here.
This is the proposal here, that the city pay for it. That's what's on the agenda.
I say that the people who want it should pay for it.
Thank you. Dave Moritz?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, let, let me get through the blue and then you can come talk, okay? Oh, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dave Moritz, my wife and I live at one-eight-six-zero-two Valley Drive in the beautiful town of Villa Park. We've been here almost a year and I promised myself I wouldn't come and get involved with council meetings. I'd give it a year, but I didn't quite make it. So, here I am, a couple days...
Well, glad to have you.
I said the same thing.
I bet, I bet we see you again.
I bet you do too. You know, this undergrounding thing, I took interest in it and it's going to be an expensive venture to study and to execute. I think, I don't think there's any question there. So, to make it worth our while, if we are going to spend the time and the money to have a proposal looked at and to have a consultant come on and do a study, I think there's some important points that should be considered. I think that the first step is to identify who we would consider beneficiaries of an undergrounding project, stakeholders. And it's more than just the people that live along the pole line street, it's more than just the people that would have an increased view, it's more than perhaps just, it's more than perhaps the people that have access to these streets and live off on a adjoining street because in order to really make this fly, the cost is going to be high and you have to have a large net cast over this assessment district to make the cost per household palatable. And so, first step, define the beneficiaries and the stakeholders. The second step would be to identify all the funding sources available. That's not just the homeowners impacted by the undergrounding project, it's looking at grants, it's looking at donations if people are that passionate about undergrounding. We'll, we'll accept any kind of money, right? I think it's important just to, to try to cast the widest net we can and to find as many funding sources as we can to make this something that would even be worth considering. Otherwise, I think it's going to be pretty cost prohibitive. I'm not saying, saying I'm against it, I just, I'm just saying we need to explore all the options we can, we can get our hands on. I think once you do those two things and you need to establish a tiered payment system that assigns a proportionate fee to those stakeholders. And once you define who those stakeholders are, then I think you could assign a scoring system perhaps, one to five, one to ten, on, on who benefits the most and who benefits the least, but is still a stakeholder and should pay for a portion of the, of the cost. And then I think the last step that's important is before you engage any consultant to do something, you want to make sure that their scope is crystal clear for the money that you're going to spend for the product you're going to get. I think it would be good to probably have a community meeting with that consultant to, to give him a little bit of input on, on where the community, where the, where the stakeholders are with this thing. Probably okay to go ahead and do it, I think it's worth the money. Maybe it'll shake out where it's palatable for everybody to do it and we can execute it, but we really want to point the consultant in the right direction before we execute his contract and get him started. And my last comment would be, I would not be in support of this at all if we didn't also include partnering with a communications company to upgrade our broadband system. You're going to be digging a trench and installing conduit, you might as well run the best technology that you can in that same trench, it just makes perfect sense to incorporate that as well. So, I would encourage the partnering with a communications company to execute this program if, if it, if it goes in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Vince Russini.
He stole a little bit of my thunder. I hope I'm still awake. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be with you and thank you for your service. My name is Vince Russini, my wife Laura and I are residents of Valley Drive. We have grown to love our home in Villa Park and enjoy the relationships we've made with our neighbors. Although Villa Park is a great place to raise a family, we had serious concerns whether we wanted to live in a community with above-ground utilities. We found the existing utility lines unsightly and more of the picture of what Villa Park could be when we purchased our home. Nevertheless, we chose to buy a home in Villa Park in anticipation that a city like Villa Park would not allow such a condition to persist. As residents, we have experienced downed power lines during Santa Ana winds, serious fluctuations in our electrical service, and these fluctuations have resulted in damage to our electronics and equipment in and around the home, very expensive. These concerns and experiences motivated me to inquire about placing my utilities underground. And as a single private homeowner, I found it very, very difficult to get these issues addressed by Southern California Edison. So, after speaking with several of my neighbors, I found that they had very similar concerns and similar experiences regarding the above-ground utilities in their service. Given these problems, we asked Councilman Colacott and Nelson for assistance in examining the feasibility of placing our utilities underground and found that other members of our community had the same concerns. We were not an isolated issue. Working together, we identified Valley Drive as a potential pilot project to evaluate the feasibility of undergrounding utilities. Councilmember Colacott, to his credit, reached out to a network of professional engineers that he's familiar with and identified Jeff Cooper, a professional engineer with Penco Engineering, who has extensive experience in these very projects. He's worked up and down the state. And after meeting with Mr. Cooper, the committee, an ad hoc committee of residents as well as the council members, we learned that this project is viable. Mr. Cooper quickly identified the proposed project area as ideal for a utility undergrounding project. To contain costs and promote community involvement, he recommended that the process begin with a feasibility study to estimate its overall costs and cost per parcel, not just a big number, what it costs from a tiered perspective each parcel. But we need the study to do that. To contain, excuse me, this study would provide key information needed by the residents and the city to decide if it is feasible, not just for Vince Russini, but for every member of this particular area. We then met with residents in the proposed project area and explained the pilot project. I'm sure you've all seen the petitions. If not, I have copies over here. We circulated the petitions and asked residents to read them and sign them if their support, if they would support such a feasibility study. It did not require them to do anything more than that, there was no obligation but to encourage the city to spend some money to help alleviate this issue and this issue could then assist with other parts of the city. The petitions presented to the residents clearly stated that their signatures only encouraged authorization of the preliminary engineering study. Our proposal received overwhelming support of the residents in the pilot project area and following the March council meeting, I took the lead in drafting a frequently asked questions brochure. The questions addressed include a process of formulating an assessment district, the process of identifying overall costs as well as benefits to homeowners. These benefits included obviously increased property values, enhanced public safety, more reliable electrical service, and candidly, a healthier neighborhood. In addition to undergrounding the electrical utilities, we may also be able to upgrade our telecommunications service. Since the March meeting, we met with representatives of Southern California Edison and obtained a cost estimate of two-point-two million for the pilot project. Given this information, we still do not completely understand how much each parcel owner will pay, hence the study, although all major costs are included in this estimate and additional, but there may be additional costs for telecommunications and cable that weren't factored in. But a preliminary review in other cities did reveal that the, that these costs are somewhat insignificant compared to SoCal Edison's costs. And there may be some leveraging in the fact that the telecommunications companies can sell a higher type of service to our residents and therefore it's in their financial benefit. Despite having an estimate from SoCal Edison, we need to approve this feasibility study. The study will provide an independent assessment of the overall cost each property owner based upon the relative benefits to their property. Factors included in this assessment include whether there is a pole in the front yard, their backyard, if there are view obstructions, safety considerations, or other factors and therefore a tiered structure, exactly as Dave mentioned. Thus, the preliminary engineering study is needed to provide reliable information to help each homeowner understand the cost and if this project makes sense for them. Although residents of Villa Park have sought to underground utility, utilities for decades, this is the first proposal, first residential proposal to seriously evaluate feasibility of such a project. The residents of Valley Drive, Rama and Loma respectfully request this council to provide funding needed for this preliminary engineering study. And I'd like to add that typically, this type of funding can be made reimbursable once the project goes forward. In other words, the city gets its money back from the homeowners themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Seth Hamilton, I'm a tired resident of Valley Drive, so I'll try and keep this one short, cut my spiel in half. I'm going to scratch the whole first thing I was going to say in respect to my neighbor's opinion that, that I value quite a bit. And a concern is, is Valley Drive the correct street. So, my whole assumption here is, based off the opinion of the engineer, that Valley Drive is the lowest hanging fruit that we have. Maybe there's a couple of them, but we have the enthusiasm of a handful of residents and I think the majority. With that said, here are a couple of ways that I want to touch on that we as residents and part of this community could either intentionally or unintentionally kill this undergrounding project. We can make this project economically unfeasible by including expensive elements into the project, such as high voltage wire undergrounding, by taking it into a different area that would just blow the project up. Putting in a commercial zone, making it too large of a project would all kill it. We could also make this pilot program too expensive by putting it in a high-traffic area just because it's a high-visibility area. The second way we could kill it is by making the project too complex, by bureaucratic hurdles or requiring more information than what is needed for a simple pilot program. We could also move the target and we could do that by inventing new requirements before approval, or we could require residents to pay for the deposit for the preliminary study. We could cause paralysis by analysis, by studying the project all the way to failure and weighing down those of us with what little energy that we have to see this thing go through. We could also delay this opportunity by waiting to get additional opinions, waiting to gather additional input from the public, or putting the decision off until further meetings. Lastly, we could kill this opportunity, opportunity by expecting one-hundred percent unanimous support. There's probably never going to be a project area or a pilot program that's going to have one-hundred percent support. That's just the reality of it. That doesn't make one side or the other wrong, there will always be a differing of opinion. However, the council needs to do what is right for the entire city, not just for a select group of residents that want this to go through or for the residents that do not want this to go through. This is, this is a benefit for the city because it is a pilot program. And I would imagine that every current and future resident would think that bringing the power poles down in Villa Park is going to improve our city and our property values. The real question I have is how much will it cost? And that's what I would like you to decide on tonight and hopefully tell us by approving this pilot program, how much it will cost.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Steve Bliss, one-zero-one-three-two Breileway Villa Park. I just have, what's more of a procedural question, is you're asking for public, public comment prior to hearing a staff report. Is that how the council generally...
This was, this was continued from the last council meeting.
Okay, so I, okay, so I wasn't aware of that. So, but I generally support the, the testimony of the prior, the prior residents who articulated their position and so, yes. So, I just did, I just wanted to hear a staff report to see what the staff's recommendation was regarding this issue.
If you'd like to hear the staff report, it would be online. If you go online, you can either read it or you can watch us on TV if you haven't had enough of us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, please, Mr. Ryan.
Jim Reichert, I live at the corner of Valley and Rama and we do a lot of traveling because a petition was mentioned, I guess we're aware, I was away for the last council meeting. I was not aware of any petition and I guess I'm right in the middle of that Valley and Rama. And I really kind of wondered about, you know, calling it, you know, a pilot project and last gentleman, you mentioned all the things, problems you can get into. Well, I kind of like to keep things simple. Pilot project for feasibility study, you know, what does that really mean? Is it feasible to do underground? Well, da, yeah, it's feasible to go underground, so I don't need to have that answered. And when you talk about a pilot project in an area to get a handle of it, well, the city is so small, I mean, I would kind of look at it, go and get together with Edison and putting out requests for proposals and saying, how much would it cost for the whole city? That way you spread the cost around many units. I think you'd get the best cost that way. And then once you get the cost in, there's someone said about estimated cost. I've heard estimated cost around here and already I guess there's been conversation with Edison. Is the council aware of any, some estimated cost per household for this pilot project? Has there been any?
We, we have other costs, yeah, we've been made aware.
What are those costs per household?
It's not, they've given us only an estimate with a forty percent...
Probability?
Yeah, probability.
Well, what is that? I'm not...
We're looking at three-point, there's another million for the telecommunications, so four million dollars for sixty...
You don't have that estimate, we only have an estimate at this point for the undergrounding of the power lines.
Oh, I got it from Southern California Edison, I got another, I got another million.
Do you have a document?
No, I had a meeting with Pat Buttress.
Do you have a document?
You can ask Pat Buttress.
I'm not asking, I meant, we have a document.
Divided by...
Don't need a document, I trust our representatives.
We, we have in our packages, I understand.
We have a package.
Two-point-two million dollar estimate from Edison with the plus or minus forty percent.
Pilot project?
What that is... What that is, is estimate for Edison to do underground utilities in the project area.
Well, what is this cost per household, then?
Well, it's not per household. What we want with the preliminary engineering study is to determine what the overall project cost would be, and to allocate it per parcel.
Oh, so you're gonna have?
That's what the whole study is supposed to provide us with that answer.
You're gonna do the study and allocate it per household.
Right.
You can have a limited number of pilot project, and that's not a very cost-effective way of doing it, okay? If you're gonna do it, you gotta look at the whole city from that standpoint. You know, like I say, go out with a request for proposals for the whole city, work that with Edison, then you'll find out what the cost is per household, because I've heard costs right now of $3,000 bucks per house. I mean, I mean, how many people are gonna vote for that? Get your, let me, let me mention it, okay? Then you can respond. If you wanna spread the cost, look at it from a total city standpoint, and then get proposals in, find out what the cost would be, then see if the community wants to do it, if they wanna handle those costs. And you're doing a pilot project, the cost's gonna be a lot greater, and if you look at it, I heard the word, you know, feasibility, I mean, obviously, it's not a feasibility study, because feasibility studies, see if you can do it. Well, I know you can do it. What you're looking at now is the best cost to do, the whole city. You're doing a small pilot project, it's gonna cost you a heck of a lot more money, and I just think that's ridiculous. Pay $15,000 for this for a pilot project, and I don't know how the heck you selected Valley Drive to do it, I think it'd probably make more sense to do one of the, you know, major entries, Lemon or Center or something like that, if you're looking for an impact in the community. So anyhow, I just think, you know, pilot project doesn't make any sense economically. You're gonna get higher costs through that, and it's not gonna show what the effects are gonna be for the entire city. So I think you should look at the entire city, and I'll give you, it'll give you the best bang for your buck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Glenn Weingarth. We live at 9161 Loma Street in the affected area, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak for a minute tonight. I operate a business at home, and so, we're in the house all the time, and we have not experienced any problems with electrical outages or any problems at all. And so, when the petition came to our house, we did not sign it, and we do not support spending $15,000 of Villa Park money on something that, right now, is not necessary. It would be relatively easy to ask our very good city staff to call three communities that have done this, and to ask what their cost was per house, in a wide range, because the committee and the community will view this project quite differently if the cost estimate per house is $1,000 or $2,000, or if the cost is $15,000 to $25,000. So, this is an unnecessary expense of $15,000 until we do a little bit of free work using our already-paid city staff, and then, after we have a rough ballpark estimate, we could decide whether or not we wanted to spend $15,000 on a project that we might be able to tell at that early point, we'll never have enough support, or if it's inexpensive, I think it would have a lot of support. So let's do what we can without spending valuable city money, and then revisit this at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Would anyone else like to speak?
You're gonna have to get up. You got a letter from me that I did just a year ago in my backyard. The pole is still there. Excuse me, I talked about it.
Are you Mrs. Robinson?
Yeah, I am. Then there, then Mrs., I won't tell you how long, but I've been in Villa Park 50 years.
Your letter is in the agenda book, just so you're aware that.
And I did not ask one penny of your tax money for this. The pole's there, because my neighbor still uses it. It was on the bottom of my slope at the property line, and it was $32,000, and I didn't remove any poles. I just, it's a, you have to have three feet deep, three feet wide, to put that underground. And it was labor, and I paid for the wire and the PVC, and it came up through my lawn, and it came up through my cement patio, and to my house. It has to go under your stucco, or if you have bricks there, that's torn out, to get to there, to get to Edison's panel, and that was all included there, and that was just a year ago. And you're talking about a lot more for each of these houses, because I didn't do anything with the street. I just did it on my own property. I don't wanna pay for that $15,000 thing. I'm Prop 13 and a widow. My husband died 14 years ago of Lou Gehrig's disease, Graves' disease. That's my comment.
How much did you pay?
Thank you.
$32,000. I just didn't, I didn't ask one penny for any of it.
But why, why did you have it done?
Because I was redoing my tennis court, and a bird stayed on it, and chirped and pooped. And I was gonna go, did a new court, and the court was 15 years old and crumbling. And I wasn't going to do that with that wire on there.
Thank you.
Six months to get the okay. So they came out right away and gave the okay, because they don't work a whole month at Edison. If there's a holiday in that month, they only work three weeks.
For the benefit of the public, she wrote a detailed letter to the council, and it has in the agenda, if you go online, you will see, it's a handwritten letter, and it was quite detailed. I learned, I learned, I learned a lot by reading it.
I don't want any of the fuss of it, so I wrote it out.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure that everyone knows it. Of course you can, and I think there's another person behind you who would like to speak also.
I wish I lived on Valley, because I would love my power poles buried. I think, first of all, it would improve all of our property values. I think they're eyesore's, not to mention the safety factor, which we don't have to get into, because everybody knows that a lot of them are slanted, and if we have a catastrophe that happens, we could be in a lot of trouble with those downed power lines. So, I'm for it. I don't see the harm in going through with something like this, just to see where it could take us, because I say, if any power pole is buried, it helps all of us in the long run.
Thank you. You wanna come up after her?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
My name is Kathleen Law. I live on 9981 Wildwood Way. I don't have power lines around me in any way, however, I know when we were looking for properties in this area, when we were on Bryley on the corner, there was a pole, and my husband just said, absolutely not, I'm not spending $100 million and having these ugly poles in my, on my property. And I think that that property we looked at is very comparable to the one we bought, but that comp affects my comp if I go to sell. So when I say I'm for this project, for my property value, it doesn't affect me specifically, but the comp there affects me. So, when people say, well, you know, it's not my problem, it is, for every piece of property around here, because we're such a small community, it does affect us and our comps, and anyway, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Mary Wright, and I live on Valley Drive, and I've lived here since 1973, and only twice has electricity gone out. Once, when a kid hit a telephone pole, and another time when an owl stretched himself too far across the wires and killed himself, and outweds electricity. But what a lot of these people don't know is how Villa Park was. Kids had horses, it was 4H, it was rural. It's still rural on Valley Drive, until somebody will decide to do something else. I have one telephone pole, one street sign, and a stop sign, all on my corner. If it's been there, I'm used to them, and I can't see spending the money that's going to be spent, and money that I'm gonna have to spend, and what is it going to do to the front of my property? What's it going to tear up? That I'm, and who's gonna fix what they tear up? Me, right? I don't like that. That's it.
Thank you. Yes.
Stayed here so long, and figured I better say something.
Thank you.
Anyway, I signed the petition when they came around. My name's Michael Goss. I live 9192 Loma. I thank you for your service, I thank you for your time. The only thing I wanna add, there's been a lot of great points, I don't wanna reiterate them all, everybody's tired. The only thing I would say is, on Loma, I asked the gentleman when they came around to check into curb and gutter on Loma. I mean, if you're gonna do this project, if at any point it ever moves forward, all those things wrapped in, okay? Because to do curb and gutter would be very expensive, to just bury the lines would be very expensive, to do the cable would be expensive. If we can do it all at once, I'm all for it, if the feasibility study shows, per household, that it's a reasonable cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I thought you were asking taxpayers. It's gonna go up on all of your property if you wanna do this. Not for that, being on Prop 13.
Thank you.
I don't want it on the next 10 years of my property, because I may not live another 10 years, and I'll pass it to somebody else, not there.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna bring it back to council for discussion. Oh, there's the hand.
I think I need to get cards.
Just working.
I'm trying.
Um, oh, no, we're, yeah, we're not there. We're not there yet.
My name is Diane Lickle. I live on 19121 Valley Drive.
Welcome.
And I spoke before, and I just don't know how you come to this conclusion that it's just Valley Drive, because that is a main line, and even though electricity is, you know, they might not have the telephone poles, but they get their electricity off those main lines. So how do you, how do you figure the price is something like that, when these people also would be, should be included? It's not fair. It's not fair. Why? Am I correct on that? You know, so, I mean, Edison here, or something that they could say, is that correct? I mean, where do they get their electricity from? How do you divide that up, then? I don't think you're being fair. So I would like to hear any comment from you.
We will discuss it after we close the public comment. Yes, we will. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
My name is Frank Olgin. I live at 18941 Valley Drive, and my question is, two things. First of all, there's a committee that initially started this proposal, correct?
There is a residence and the councilman, yeah, two councilmen, not a, it was a resident committee.
Do you know the number, names of the people?
I only know, no, no. I don't, I only know a few of them.
Don't you think we should know that?
Yes.
Why is, why is a specific committee appointed to begin with?
They weren't appointed, sir.
Okay, who started it?
It's not, I know.
I can address that. Some, some Valley residents came to Councilman Colacott and myself with this. One of them was Vince, I believe, and that spoke earlier, and Seth back there, were a couple of people on there, and they came to us with this proposal, said they would like to do that, and we indicated we would help them in doing it, and we helped them in going out into the community to get a petition to find if the resident, other residents were also interested in getting this underground utility project. And what we found from that, there was a sizable portion of the residents were. I think out of the 65 homes we contacted, we got about 90% of the people signed the petition, said they were in support of this.
Well, when this was initially done, was it told to the people that it was a $15,000 study gonna be spent?
Yes. We asked them to support.
I didn't know that at all.
Support a $15,000 proposal.
I think that's important, number one. It's not chump change, right?
I agree. No, it was.
And then, how many people would, if they were presented with the cost for family or for home, would, again, say that this is something they would consider?
Well, the whole purpose of this study is to determine.
Isn't there a way to find out what it would cost without spending $15,000?
There's no way.
You can't tell me that that's true.
No, there's no way, in my understanding.
There's no way?
No, no way.
Well, I thought someone else has done it in other cities, someone mentioned earlier they've done it.
Because they have done studies like this.
This lady said she spent $32,000, or whatever it was.
She, that was for an individual home.
I know, but the point is, that's just what you're, we don't have 1,500 people on that street, right? So it's gonna be pretty much an individual thing. Reichert mentioned that if you had the city to go with Edison to find out what it would be for the whole city, if they were interested to do that, that might decrease it, but it sounds to me like it's gonna cost $30,000 per house, and I don't think anybody wants to pay that. I don't think we, it'd be an electrical problem. Not only that, but if you have an electrical problem, you have to dig it up. At least here, on the pole, it's available, correct?
I'm not arguing that, I'm just, I'm just telling you, you asked, who did the project? I was trying to tell you that.
I mean, why was it initiated to begin with? Because of what, there was this popular demand by all the people on Valley Drive? I don't think so.
Well, we'll have our council discussion after, and you'll probably get a lot of the questions answered right after the public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes. Here she comes. Hi, how are you?
Fine, thank you. I'm back here, lots of time.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Angela Castagna. I live on 19172 Valley Drive, across the street from Mr. Vince Rossini. I gotta say that the pole on his property, in front of the property, give us a lot of trouble. I experiment a lot of times with no electricity. Even if it goes for one minute, then everything goes mess, but we did have a couple of times. He said the truth. Some of the say no, but sometime, we have a problem more uphill towards Central Villa and nothing below. So Mary and Diane, they're below us, so they don't experience any problem. Now, another thing, I don't know about spending money, I don't know what's going on, but that we'll take care of later. The lady said that she spent $32,000. We spent, we used to have one acre land, and it was down this way and up this way. So my husband, he wants to put pipes to level the lot in the back. We spent $40,000, we never asked the city. Actually, we had to pay for the permit, too, so if we wanna do something, it's up to us. The lady wants to do, she, she did more, not only for the street, or whatever. She did the house, she did the tennis court and everything. So, whatever we wanna do, we are free, so I don't know what I'm gonna say. Just now, let's take care about the electrical pole, see what we're gonna do.
Thank you.
We get together, so, thank you very much. Thank you. You have a good evening.
Yes, 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 sir.
Just one brief comment. As a sample of one, when the petition was presented to us, we were not told what it would cost.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna bring it back to council now. Public comment is closed, and? Council members?
Yeah.
Hi.
I have a.
I can start, you can start.
I mean, I can.
What we have here, let's, just a very brief recap, because it's late, and I just wanna make sure that I have the facts right. We have some very interested residents who took a project to the councilman, who offered to assist them. They were provided with a petition that had the city seal on it, which is not something that you're supposed to do. They knocked on doors, and some residents thought that this was a city project. They were not aware. They were not aware that it was something that was going to be proposed as an assessment district, was not aware that there was going to be a $15,000 consultant fee that was going to be presented to council at the council meeting, because it's not on there. I think that this project is great. I think every single pole in the city should be buried. But when you have an assessment district, the cost needs to be buried by the people who want to be formed it. And it's, we do not have a protocol in place here in the city of Villa Park. We probably should. These projects are being done Laguna Beach right now and in Newport Beach. Same thing. It's about $300,000 for this series of homes, but that cost is borne by the residents. So that $15,000 cost, it should be borne by the residents that are affected by it. The 95 people or the 65 people, not the city. And that's how it's done. So I don't, I mean, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the council. We have no objection about the power poles being buried. The city can't bury them. The city's not going to pay for the power poles to be buried. Can't afford it. We don't have the money. We're not big enough to do that.
Do you agree?
Yeah, I agree. To form an assessment district, it would have to go to a vote. We would not, we would not form the district for you. You would have to go to a vote, if I remember that correctly. So we're not, we're not asking you to do that. You do have two councilpeople and some residents who have brought this to your attention. They want to see if you're interested in it, and they would like a study done to see how much it would cost per parcel. The city should not be paying the $15,000 to find that out. We have an estimate of how much it should cost, based on the history, based on Southern California Edison, based on Laguna Beach, based on Newport Beach. It's a very, very rough estimate, but the numbers are large. And that's okay. If somebody wants to do that, we have Mrs. Robinson over here who wanted to do it on her own. She did it too. The only issue we're here to.
It's individual to.
The only issue that we're here to vote on is whether or not the city pays $15,000 to have a consultant provide. That's all we're voting on tonight. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I have a different perspective on this. I see this as something that benefits, there's one lady that spoke about it, benefits entire city. If you have any part of the city that's put underground utilities, some parts of the city is already underground, and if it has a property that's a comparable property to yours, it has an impact on you. I feel this is something that could have a positive impact on the city. Residents come to us and say they want to do this. It's taken the city only a small amount of $15,000 to come up and see if it's feasible to do this. If the cost comes in per parcel and the homeowners get to vote on it to form a district, they can make that determination based on what we have here. You have these other estimates from Edison, you have Edison from other cities, but there's nothing like having the actual estimate of what it would cost for your particular parcel to do this, so that the residents on Valley and associated areas can make an intelligent decision about whether they want to have this done or not. And if they do decide to go forward with it, then the city gets their $15,000 back.
Maybe.
No, they do. They, the city gets their $15,000 back if they decide to go forward with it. Is my understanding.
Counsel?
Okay, hold on. Let the council discuss here. Public comment's done.
Okay. First, this is a great project, and I would like to commend Councilman Colacott and Nelson for taking the initiative and spending the time to work this up, to go pound the streets, to work up the project. Vince, I guess you were involved. So I commend all of you for doing that. I think it's a great move. At the last meeting, I made some efforts to try and get some ballpark estimates on what this is going to cost, so I knew whether or not I wanted to put this $15,000 forth. And I just, for the life of me, I could not get a number. I was told it wasn't more feasible. So based on that, I frankly was in support of it, and I'm the one that pushed to continue it to this meeting so that we could have a little more input in the interim, and maybe I could find something out about value, about cost. And with the advice that, as it stood, I basically supported it. However, since then, SCE has come in and given us a $2.2 million estimate, apparently, rough estimate, but, and then made a suggestion, it's probably going to be another million dollars to put the cable and the telephone underground. I heard some other numbers about a 40% contingency for whatever in there, and I had some other discussions. And the bottom line is, as I contemplated, it looks like it's going to be extremely expensive. But without trying to pick a number, if you just use something in the $2 million, maybe $2.5, say $2.5 million for the entire project with all contingencies and including the million dollars of cable, and we just back it all the way down to $2.5 million or even less, you take 93 homes and you divide that out, and you're looking at probably $35,000, $25,000, $30,000, $35,000, then you've got the dig-in cost to the homes. Now, if the residents want it, I'm all for it. It's a great project. But just based on my experience with this community, I think you're going to have a heck of a time getting a big, the majority, or even significantly more than the majority of those people to back this at 30, in excess of $25,000, let's say, I'll pick a conservative number. I don't think it's very realistic, as much as I'd love to have it. So I support it, but not until I think there ought to be a mutually agreed form of survey, a very simple survey sheet that tells the people, here's what we know, so here's what we think the costs would be minimum, probably be this much or more, and whatever parties can agree on, the city manager can talk to council, and send out an agreed form and give them a little information, and then ask them to send it back and let us know how interested they are and how much they want to spend the $15,000, you know, at that point. And if we get back a big, heavy response, I'm in. But if we don't, I'm out. And until we do that, I don't want to spend the $15,000. I don't think it's worth it, because frankly, I just don't think it's going to work, as great a project as it is.[998.61][998.61](APPLAUSE). So I don't want to burn $15,000 of the city money until I get that back from the residents, because if it comes back and even 70% of the residents want it and the others don't, I'm not going to vote to stuff a $25,000 or $35,000 or $40,000 bill down 30 residents' throats that don't want it, even if the other 70% want it. I'm not going to do that. And so it's going to take a big favorable response to get me to vote to even spend the $15,000. I want to make sure these people understand generally where they're coming from before I spend that money. So as much as I love the project, and I commend both the councilmen for doing it, and I will support it under those circumstances, unless I'm, you know, subject to whatever comments can be made, I would make a motion that we direct the city manager to send out an appropriate survey and kick this over for 30 to 60 days to see the survey results before we spend any money.
If I can make a comment, I don't think we need to spend cities, the cities' money or time to do that. Because, hold on, let me finish for a second. We have today, I think I must have received a dozen emails from residents that emailed me and said, wait a second, we don't want an assessment. Okay, the council got emailed today. So, and that's typically what happens on a council meeting day. That's when everybody sends us all of our correspondence. I think we have done hours of study. I myself know more about power poles now than I've ever wanted to know about.
Rule 28?
Rule 28. You know, I learned how much money it costs us to bury them out here. I know that we haven't finished paying for the poles that we buried out here, and we're not going to finish paying them for another 17 years. This is for an independent assessment district, and the group should get together, as they did in Laguna, as they did in Newport, and this is how it's done, and they themselves pay the consultant. You take the 100 homes, you divide it by 15,000, and that's how they do it. I know that Jared's been versed in that. He has some spreadsheets from the other cities. He's talked to the city managers to see how they've done it. And that's how the cities do it. The city doesn't bear the cost for these special assessment districts.
Why did you guys bury those?
So.
Why did you guys bury those?
I don't think we know, Jared.
I'm curious. I mean, you spent the money burying them out.
We had, we had, we had.
We had a pot of money. We had about $300,000 in a bank account to bury such poles. And at the time, the idea was proposed by, I'd have to look, a particular council member, maybe the city manager back then, and.
And we borrowed, and we borrowed money also, that we, 120, $120,000. It's going to take us 17 years to pay back. We've not started to pay it back yet.
And is the truth, the city paid for that?
The city paid for that.
So what happened? The city paid for that. What we're asking here is just for a preliminary study of whether residents would pay for.
But this wasn't an assessment district.
And you're saying you spent, you spent over $300,000 in city money there and still have a long-term obligation to bury a couple of poles out in front of the.
The long-term obligation is 28 funds. We didn't have, we did not have the funds, and we purchased the funds from Laguna Woods. And it's through funds that we did not, we would never receive. It's a tax, it's a tax fund from Southern California Edison. So we never get the money, but we won't earn the money anymore.
Can we find out, can I go somewhere to find out? Was it for to increase property value? Was it at stake? What was the reason?
I wasn't on the council. I can't, I couldn't tell you how to do that.
Aesthetics?
Yeah, I don't, can't tell you.
We had, so we have a pot of money from Southern California Edison, which we can only spend on undergrounding utilities. That's it. So at that time, we said, hey, what pot of money do we have? How much? And what projects can we, you know, construct in underground that will give us the biggest bang for the buck? And it was thought to do the town center here, because there's a big improvement to take us out of the 70s.
Big, you know.
Right. No, no, there's no, no objection. No objection. No objection. We agree with you when it looks at that.
So what happened is, we had about $280,000. When the project was bid, that wasn't enough to actually cover all the costs. So we had to go out and we bought for 50 cents to the dollar from City Stanton, $50,000 worth of their Rule 28 funds. It was just transferred on Edison's side from their bank account to our bank account with Edison, in Excel spreadsheet, technically. So it was transferred over to Villa Park. Still, that wasn't enough money to cover the costs. So we had to go out and get another $80,000. We got this $80,000 from the city Laguna Woods, and we told them that we would transfer our future Rule 28 allocations to them once, in the amount of 120,000. We're just now starting to pay that 120,000 back.
At $12,000 a year.
The Villa Park collects 11 to $12,000 a year. So we're paying them back, and we will not start collecting money again until 2027, perhaps.
But that money is specific, right?
It's only for undergrounding utilities.
Because it's such a necessary.
But, but again, did I, did I hear you say that the city really came out and paid cash for some of the undergrounding utilities?
We did have to spend $25,000 in general fund.
In general funds, undergrounding utilities.
And how much, where is the $12,000 a year to pay down this debt coming from? Is that general fund money or?
No, it's coming from, actually, the residents.
It's Rule 28.
It's on the, their Edison bills. There's a little calculation. It's on, it's on Edison's bill.
It's not, it's not cash that's received into the city. There are taxes and funds.
So are committing resources to a specific area of the city to the exclusion of all other areas of the city? Just basically, we're spending all this money on utility poles that are primarily benefiting the commercial property owners of this area.
Okay. Let me, may I?
Yes, awkward.
Okay. The Public Utilities Commission, which is the PUC, requires all the utilities companies to set aside certain funds for the undergrounding of utilities within the area that they serve. So, and that's what's called Rule 28. So there is a certain percentage of the money that the charges, it is on your bill, it is set aside from the utilities companies for each city that they serve to underground those facilities. And there is certain requirements that money can be used, can be used only in a commercial areas, on arterials, and so cannot be utilized, used and spent underground utilities within residential streets. So there is certain requirements where that money can be spent. So yes, for example, Santiago, it is a commercial street and arterial, so it qualifies to have the funds from Rule 28 to be spent for undergrounding those utilities.
So the commercial owners of the property.
So that is, you know, there is the Rule 28, which is, is, you know, the property owners will be responsible for the undergrounding or the cost for undergrounding the utilities within their city.
All right.
I think the confusion now is that, that, that undergrounding was actually on our public property, and that's the reason it got buried. It wasn't on any private property. Correct?
The undergrounding is within the commercial areas, all the cost that Rule 28 pays or any assessment is the undergrounding within the public roadway. Okay? And it's the main lines. So if the, even, when, if you do, form an assessment, underground assessment district, and if there's a lines goes between, on private property, but between boundaries, you know, next to that, that qualifies as part of the assessment. But the connection from the main lines into the private property to the panel, service panel, that becomes outside the assessment district.
Now, before us now, to make, to try and move forward, before us now is the council needs to take a vote, whether or not we.
But could, can I just say?
Will be approving $15,000.
Could I just say one thing before we move on? It's what I'm hearing here, is that we spent thousands of dollars to put utilities underground in a public area. And all we're asking here is to put $15,000 to do a study to look at doing it for residential area. And this even has potential for the council getting its $15,000 back. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, but we're also, we're also cautious that we feel that the, and I'm just going to use a round number, 100 residents, we're confident that once they realize there's going to be a $30,000 assessment on their property taxes, that they're not going to want the power pole buried.
We don't, we don't, we don't know that until we get the study.
I feel pretty comfortable that.
You can, you can.
We didn't pass Measure K because we didn't want $300 on our property taxes. I mean, so, you know.
And I prefer to give the residents a choice, myself. I prefer a more democratic process, let them make that decision, to provide them the information, they can make an informed decision on their own, not for me to sit here and try to make a decision for them.
Have you read your emails today?
Yes, I read my emails today. I read pro and cons for them. But not all of them came from, from necessary residents in the affected area.
Call for a vote? Excuse me? We have, the emails aren't here. They came in late this afternoon.
You got mine yesterday.
Yeah. You got what?
You got mine yesterday. Not today. Not late.
I don't, I don't know who you are.
Yeah, we got, we got all the emails.
Did, I don't know your face, though. I'm sorry.
I'm Sid Hysler.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You got mine yesterday.
Thank you.
And you responded.
I did respond to you.
Stating that I had the facts correct.
Thank you.
I just don't know who the committee is, and I would like to know that.
Well, let me address that. The people that participated include myself, Councilman Nelson, Vince Rosini in the back, Seth Hamilton, I'm not sure where he is, right there behind you, and Billy Scaffington, who owns Rockwall's across the street. I met with you, and I, and I discussed the project with you in detail, and I also presented you with this petition to support, to support or reject the project. to support or reject the project. However, you, uh, we did identify that it was a couple of councilmen and a group of residents that were looking to see if there would be support for the city to do a preliminary engineering study, not a preliminary feasibility study, but preliminary engineering study. And this is the text of the petition. It says, "We, the undersigned homeowners, support and encourage the Villa Park City Council to authorize a preliminary engineering study of underground utilities in our neighborhood. We understand that by signing this petition, we are under no obligation, but believe that this is important to investigate this matter so that we can make an informed decision regarding implementation of a utility undergrounding project." So this, on its face of it, says, it doesn't give, make any obligation, it doesn't establish a benefit assessment district. All it is, and all I explained to you, is that this is a study to get us information so that we can make an informed decision.
I didn't track my signature on that petition. Once I found out that it was not presented to me by the city, but by a private...
Is the public hearing open or closed right now?
It's closed. Ms. Cart...
Is the public testimony open or closed? I thought you were going to say public testimony.
Excuse me? Excuse me, yes. It is, it is, excuse me, thank, thank you very much. It's, it's up the mayor's discretion if Mr. Colacott wants to speak with a resident.
Well, you have the opportunity to talk.
Excuse me. Hold on one moment. Let, let's continue the com, Bob, you have the floor. Are you...
Okay.
Mr. Col, let, let Mr. Colacott continue. He has the, the floor. Let him finish his thought.
Okay. The, uh, you know, again, the, what we're trying to do is provide information so that re, residents can make an informed decision about whether they want to underground utilities or not. Uh, it's been a longstanding issue. It's been an issue I've been aware of since I moved here in, uh, you know, late resident in 1981. Um, I know when I was going out campaigning this fall, the issue of raising or of, uh, taking down the utility lines and the power poles was something that was brought up quite frequently. Going into this, I had no idea what it would really cost. Um, and nobody else knew. There, in fact, at the last council meeting, we heard numbers all over the place, some of them astronomically high for undergrounding utilities. At this point in time, we have a preliminary estimate from Edison that would be $2.2 million to underground 8,300 linear feet of utility pole. There'd be some additional costs that we need to identify for, uh, co-locating the cable and the telecommunication, telecommunications lines. And we might even be able to improve our telecommunications if we did that. Uh, we've, I, uh, we've been working with a engineer that has long experience in doing these kinds of projects and is currently doing these various kinds of projects in Newport Beach and Laguna Beach. They, those cities have been able to figure out a way to make this kind of a process work. We're trying to build on their experience to see, okay, would this work here? But first, we need to identify, not speculation, but get a good professional estimate as to what would this cost overall? You know, what would the additional cost be beyond the Edison estimate for undergrounding the utilities? And what would the, um, what would be the projected per parcel cost based on, again, proven, um, benefit assessment, uh, procedures? And then provide that information to the residents. And if the residents say, hey, this is, this is not something we want to do, then it's done. But right, you know, we've been talking about undergrounding the utilities for as long as we've been a city. Uh, it's time to, okay, let's, let's get out, get the facts so that we can make an informed decision. And either to say, look, we're going to let our grandchildren's grandchildren have utility poles. Or, well, maybe this is something that we can do to make a change to our city, take the mustache off the Mona Lisa, shave it down a little bit, and let her be as beautiful as she can be. But we, we can't, if we, if we drop this now, we've, um, again, we've gone over 50 years bitching and complaining about the utility poles. And every time everybody, anybody ever brings it up, they, we, the city staff throws up its hands and says, oh, it's going to be too expensive, uh, forget it. Well, we're trying to see, okay, well, what is really the cost? How could we do this? Is there way, you know, if we did, you know, how could we best finance this so that it would be, uh, something that would be feasible? That's all. Just trying to find, get facts together. We do. We do. We have the preliminary. But you want to know how much it's going to cost you, don't you? Well, I don't either, $30,000 or $40,000, but we don't know if it's $30,000 or $40,000.
Okay. I'll tell you what, um, it would, I'll bring it back to campus. Anyone has any other comments? If someone would like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment first.
I move that we instruct the city manager to send out a survey to the 93 people or whatever it is. With the cost estimate information we have now, ask them if they remain interested and that we continue this matter and review those responses prior to the, whenever we bring it back on calendar. And then we can intelligently decide whether we want to spend the city's money.
Those people that taught you that are forced to do their own driving.
Okay, all right. All right, well, we got a first.
Second.
I make a counter motion to reject the city paying $15,000 for the study and to direct staff, no, and to direct staff to tell the ad hoc residential committee to, that they have to pay for it on their own.
But the city will benefit as a whole.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you misunderstand my motion?
Are you wanting to pay the $15,000?
Here's what I wanted to do.
He wants, he wants a study.
Let me clarify my motion. My motion is that we instruct the city manager to send a survey sheet to all the affected residents.
And kick this down a month.
Providing them with the information that we have to date on costs and asking them, in light of that information, if they remain interested in this project. We kick this down a month or two, whatever makes sense. We get those, those evaluations back and we review those before we address this again.
Jared, did you provide counsel with those spreadsheets on Newport Beach and Laguna Beach that we went?
No, you made a motion. Do you think they're second or not?
Okay, you'd, uh...
Yeah, I made a second. I want to make sure I got it right because then I started hearing something else.
He seconded. We have a second. Thank you very much. All right. We know what we're doing up here.
I want to clar...
Sish. Um, we have a second.
Yeah, I, I wanted, because I wanted to say something before Rick faced.
Go ahead.
I want to clarify the motion, Rick. You, you're saying to, to get this survey, are you going to say a specific dollar amount?
You know, we can work it out with city manager, but I think what it should say, it should give them the facts, should say,
Mona Lisa with a mustache.
We've talked to SCE, they've given us a loose estimate of, another loose estimate of to put the cable in. Um, and that's what we've got. If you, if you utilize those, the cost would be, you know, you can figure it out. There's 93 homes.
But you're expending city funds.
Those are the estimates. They're loose estimates. They could be, they could go either way. But let's tell them what we know. Let's give them the information. Say, here's what we have to date. It's not solid information. In fact, I don't think we're going to get a bid, even if we spend the $15,000. We're just going to get an estimate, right?
Yes. That's all it is. It's an estimate.
It's not going to be a bid.
No, it's not going to be, not, not a bid. It's, it's going, it's going...
It's going to be an estimate, okay?
It's going to be estimated of the cost.
Right. We have a loose estimate for SCE already, so let's just share that with the community. Here's what we have. Here's the number of homes, okay? If you want to give them a number, you could pick something, but, you know, they could probably figure it out themselves. However, we write it. But I just think they should have the information. Then let's see if they're interested. Let's see what we get back and how much interest there is because unless it's a really heavy favorable response, you know, from my perspective, we're spinning our wheels because I don't, I don't know how many people on this council are going to force, are going to force those non-consenting people to spend that kind of money. I'm not.
I'm not.
Well, but my question last month was, I'm all in favor of having some study done for the whole city. Because that's the, I know it's not, but I mean, we're making other comments right now. That, to me, is the most reasonable thing to do, is the whole city, because that's what Laguna Beach and Newport Beach have done. They've done the rest of the city.
Right, but you want to spend that great, it costs us a fortune. Okay, we're, we're having a fight in over $15,000.
Why $15,000?
This is low hanging fruit.
But that's what everybody else has been talking about.
Yeah, they aptly picked low hanging fruit.
Yeah.
Councilman Colacott.
That's fine.
And Nelson picked what they perceived to be the most cost efficient area in the city to evaluate this project. In other words, if it isn't going to work here, it's probably not going to work anywhere in the city, which makes a lot of sense. And they put a lot of time and legwork into it. So I'm not really inclined to drop it. I'd at least like to give the community an opportunity to see what information we have and then get back to us. And if they want it and that community really wants it...
And they can, they can pay for it themselves, too. Yeah.
And that's an issue we can address at that point. But I'm just not inclined to kill it yet, even though I don't think, I frankly don't think there's a big chance this is going to work.
Then why do we keep moving things over if you don't think it's going to work? I think that we...
Because I, I'm not, you know, although I don't think it'll work, I'm not the members of the community. It doesn't cost anything to give them the information and let them respond. We have two council members and a citizen that spent a lot of time and effort to, to make this survey, to walk the community, and got a highly favorable response. Let's at least send a survey sheet out. It doesn't cost us anything.
The council member should have given them the information.
Then we can intelligently move forward. I think it's going to, I think it's going to fall apart, but... Yeah, let's, let's do a vote here. I agree. We got a second, unless there's a substitute motion.
Yes. Yes.
Did you have a substitute?
I did the second.
My substitute died.
Councilman Burnett. Uh, Mayor Proton Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
I'm not sure what I'm voting on at this point.
Over here.
Can you, uh, repeat the motion?
For city staff to send an interest letter to the residents with very preliminary cost estimates. Um, just, I mean, a wild-ass guess, pardon my, my language. Um, and then the property owners must sign or express interest. Once I generate essentially an impartial survey, not from council, not from residents, but city staff driven. It's going to be, you know, we've done initial homework. It's going to be $2.2 million. I'll go off that cost number. Divide that by 93 is approximately $26,000. If it's $26,000, are you still interested in proceeding? Period.
But, you know, I, I object to that number because it says, that, that has, they says, couldn't be off by as much as 40%.
Sure.
Because it said there's no, there's no engineering. What is, what we asking for in the study is the engineering.
We also left out all the cable and the telephone.
Then just give the spread. Give the spread. You give a spread.
15 to 35?
You give the spread according to the 40% it has, isn't it?
Plus or minus 40%.
Sure.
Yeah.
But if you're going to do that, put in the million dollar estimate for cable and tools.
Well, let's just deal with this first.
We've got an estimate of 2.2 to 3.2 with a 40% hedge factor. I just want to get lost.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have any other official estimates. It's the only official estimate we got.
Just give us the information you know.
That's what I'm saying.
This, this, this is all, this is all we know.
Go for it.
Tell them what we know.
Exactly. Okay.
Honest, honest, what we've been advised.
So let me start off. Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Sure.
Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
No. All right.
All right.
Do we need, do we need to... Okay, uh... We have five minutes. Rick needs to give us...
Rick needs another break.
Well, that's probably, some people probably gonna be involved, that's why they wanna do the study, so they can kinda have a, an idea how to parse that out. Because it's gonna be weighted, obviously. I bet I didn't, of course, the real estate people, they... And it does make it look nice. And then this project got here, and they're granting it from the town center, it was for a specific purpose. They couldn't really live with that. So they, so they had money to spend. Because you don't turn it back to the city.
I didn't know who you were. Well, I mean, but I don't, I don't remember.
I guess not.
I don't, yeah, no. Oh, yeah, no, I got, yeah, I got some rest, too.
Thanks for coming. See you next month. Start calling Richer, I just started calling Richer. You guys talk about CDC? You guys do move slow, you guys don't, don't wanna make the decision. I believe in making decisions, I believe in right of mind making decisions. I'm trying to get some... Now, I wanna get this, I gotta get up in the morning. Wait too long, I don't want to take the decision.
What did I do? Oh, you emailed this, I responded to you.
Don't worry about it. You gotta be a sentimentalist. About eleven, eight, oh, yeah. Are you tired? You got marmon. Probably like yours. If I wake up, my queen and my princess, you know, they're thinking... You know what they say, you can wake up grumpy? No, I let her sleep. Why don't you tell her I said that? I'm gonna tell her you said that. Let her sleep, okay. I didn't recall. She had an open mic. All right, let's get started, so. We don't have anything controversial. Of course, that jumps you either way.
All right, so, Councilman, if we can continue? You coming back? Has it left you? Well, thank you, thank you for the comments, I appreciate it. And I do mean this, I, I don't know how many I got yesterday or today, and...
Sue will correct you, will you?
Yes, I know she did, she did. I got it, I took it, I took it, and I responded to her yesterday, but I really, I think I was in bed all morning, and I forgot to do it.
That was, that was a mistake, so we're working on it.
I, it's all council got, so, whatever, whatever, nice. Okay.
Okay, Sarah. Thank you. You guys stay for the rest? Sue?
Okay.
You guys stay for the rest of the meeting?
Well, anyway, I don't know. I don't know what the solution is.
We are on consent calendars, items nine through twenty-one.
Oh, you guys are done?
No, we're not done.
No, let's go going.
If you wanna stay, if you wanna stay, please stay. It's, this is a very exciting question.
No, it's all right, you're fine, you didn't interrupt anything.
We really appreciate all the time, I think you still have more on me than gentlemen, everybody's leaving, that's too bad.
Thank you, thank you, bye-bye. Ciao. All right, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are enacted by one motion approving the recommended action. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from consent calendar for discussion. Unless otherwise specified, remove an item, all items shall be considered immediately following action on the remaining items on the consent calendar. Would any council person like to pull any item on the consent calendar?
You know, I hate to do this, I swore I wouldn't today, but I'm gonna pull twelve for a one-sentence comment.
I wanna pull twenty and twenty-one.
Twenty and twenty-one. All right, so do I have a motion to move the remaining items?
I'll move the remaining items.
Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
Senator Proton Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Mayor Fessinelli.
Yes.
Five-oh, carries.
Item twelve.
I only asked to pull item twelve just to make a brief comment. Item twelve, as I recall, alluded to the reduction in crime. Ooh, there's Vince, don't go anywhere, Vince. Item twelve refers to the reduction in crime, but I did notice, if I read the sheet correctly, that we have a fifty-two percent increase in robberies, residential burglaries, and grand theft between two thousand thirteen and fourteen, which was the comparison years. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
With that, I'm happy to move it.
Will you move it?
Move it.
This is receiving pile, voice vote?
Um, yes.
Aye.
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 All right, Councilman Nelson, twenty.
I pulled twenty and twenty-one because I thought what was supposed to be on the consent calendar was kind of routine items that the council already had a lot of prior knowledge and stuff on it. And these are two things that's asking us to, I guess, send letters of opposition and support of two different, it's like two different legislative things. And I had no, I have no idea what, what they are, particularly like the one concerned Orange County Fire Authority. You know, I had heard, I've heard about this, but I had no explanation for staff of what this is and what impact it might have on this city.
I'm happy to brief you on that.
The assembly bill's attached.
That probably shouldn't have been on here.
I know, I know the assembly bill's attached, but, but we have staff, in my opinion, that's provided with interpretation of what the assembly bills mean.
I don't think those should be on consent, that's a policy position we gotta take.
Exactly, yeah.
I agree.
That's the kind of policy position we have taken, we should have some explanation on, on what, what these bills are.
Well, that's why we pulled it, so.
That's why I pulled it.
Can somebody brief us on the first one? Six, SB six-oh-eight?
SB six-oh-eight would provide homeless persons the right to use public spaces here at City Hall without discrimination based on their housing status. Essentially, homeless individuals would be allowed to sit in front of City Hall.
And also in, in the entrances to businesses?
Entrances to businesses.
Yes, public right-of-way.
Byways, parks.
We have kind of addressed this before, but I don't think Bill's here, so.
Well, I didn't know whether we had homeless problem or not.
Yeah, they're here every morning if you come early.
Oh, I...
We have them on the lawn.
I've never seen them.
Yeah, they're here.
If this passes, we will.
No, if, if this passes, we'll have much more, but they're here.
Oh, you're saying if you just pass, we will.
Sales are local control, much like elderly care, sober living homes, small family daycares, you know, they'll just have the right.
Usurps the local right to control.
Okay, all right.
Where is Senator Lou from? Jared?
Voice vote?
Uh, a question, please. Where is Senator Lou from, do you know?
I'm trying?
Where is where?
Is he the author of this bill?
I think he's from...
I don't know, he's a Democrat.
I would say, you know?
You want me to look it up?
You know, I don't know, I can find that answer unless you...
Why don't you Google it, Rick?
I can Google it if you really wanna know.
Yep.
It's not, uh...
Yeah, I can Google it, I'm having a little trouble getting out of my map art for some reason. Oh, here, maybe this'll do it, here we go.
Okay.
You want a briefing on the second one, Bill?
Yeah.
Well, do we have to take them individually? Do we have to pass them individually, Jared?
On the second one.
Well, let's, let's pass the first one first.
Let's pass the first one, yes. No, we're passing the, we have to do the first one.
I'll pass the first one. I'll move, I'll move past the show, twenty-one.
Second?
Uh, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty. Not twenty, move past the twenty.
Uh, Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mills.
Yes.
Mayor Fessinelli.
Yes.
Five-oh.
Okay, Rick?
Now, twenty-one, Rick, you wanna tell us what's going on with the fire authority?
This is a bill, and I've even forgotten who, who put it in there, it's gotta, it's gotta be a labor-promoted bill. It is, it's a bill to restructure the fire authority to reduce the number of directors, and I think it takes, I can't remember whether it takes down to five or eight, something like that. On the grounds that the board's too large and unwieldy, so then you have to have an allocation and decide, you know, who's gonna get representation. Right now, the board is configured with two members of the Board of Supervisors and one member from each participant city. So there's twenty-three city council member directors and two board of supervisors directors, for a total of twenty-five. This will reduce it down to a fourth or fifth of that, and then you'll have to have, obviously, more diluted representation. The, the last meeting, the OCFA actually voted to oppose it. It was something like, I think we had two abstentions, the county abstained, I think we had one vote against, or maybe one more abstention. Other than that, it was unanimous, it was about twenty-two to one or nothing.
Against.
Against it, yeah, because the argument is, the agency's created by a joint powers agreement between those entities, and we have the right to control it. So if you let the state do it, they then usurp your joint powers agreement, they dilute the board, they make it easier for the union to lobby the few directors that are there. So, nobody was very crazy about it, and it went down in flames at OCFA. So, I, I told them we had not voted on it, but that I suspected it would probably end up being a unanimous vote based on historical. So, you know, I don't, it was virtually unanimous, so I don't, you know, it's just...
So it's almost a moot point now?
The only, the only good thing about it is it reduces the board, makes size more manageable, that it does do.
That, that is, but, but you're telling me that the state can arbitrarily just take a joint powers authority?
Well, we had, we had an opinion on that, and I think it was, it looked like...
Reconfigure it?
They likely had some authority at the state level to do it because of their, you know, position up there, but, you know, if they did it, it might be a lawsuit on it, I don't know. But the bottom line is we don't have to worry about it yet because it hasn't been enacted. OCFA's setting meetings with the, with the author of the bill, it, you know, it was, I say, it went down like twenty-two to one or nothing, I can't remember which it was. So Villa Park voted against it already.
Yeah, yeah.
But we didn't represent that, I voted against it, but I didn't have the, the council, the blessing, because I, you know, we...
Yeah, they just came up on the agenda.
That's why, that's why we wanna send a letter to them.
So you can ratify my vote.
Yeah, that's what we wanna do.
What, what impact would that have on Villa Park, now that we have one on it, would we have?
We'd have none.
We'd have none?
Yeah, we'd have none. I mean, theoretically, could we maybe get everybody to vote to put us on there?
Yeah, but how, how, how will new ones be allocated?
There's a whole formula written up in the bill, and I don't remember what all it was, but the bottom line was, it was highly unlikely that the smaller cities would end up getting any representation.
Which is just horrible.
Orange.
Yeah, it really, it threw us to the dogs.
Well, I wanted to understand, maybe, maybe, you know, it might be that somewhere you still come out with one.
If you start talking nice to them, do you think you'll get people to support us?
The problem with it is that...
Rick's popular out there.
I know, I'm working on it.
The problem is that it just, it takes it down so small that the union can focus its lobby efforts, just, I mean, the pressure on those guys will be unbearable. I mean, they're lobbying the whole group now and spending money, so I can imagine what would happen if you shrunk the group size. I could share comments, I'm not gonna put them on the record, but, you know, I've had discussions that just lead me to believe that there's way too much influence, and you shrink this down, the influence, in my opinion, is gonna go sky-high, so I didn't want anything to do with it.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, I personally don't like the big board, it is too big. But, the cost of making it smaller is, in my opinion, increased, essentially corruption. I mean, look at Congress, four-hundred-and-thirty-five people, you wanna talk about inefficiency? Now, you wanna take it down to five or ten for efficiency? Eh, not many.
We need to be represented.
Yeah.
We're a city, we don't do this for fun.
I want some divergent views and new eyeballs. So, yes, it's inefficient, but it's also less subject to corruption, and that agency, in my opinion, has enough problems.
Okay, all right. I'll move approval of twenty-one, then.
This is a resolution.
Yeah.
It's a adopted resolution, two thousand fifteen, thirty-three twenty-three. Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Mayor Fessinelli.
Yes.
Carries five-oh, and Senator Lou is out of LA, she's got a field office in Glendale, and then a satellite office in...
All right, twenty-two, we have mayor and council member items. Consideration of revising new financial reporting in a monthly presentation versus bimonthly, that is Councilman Nelson's.
Uh, yeah, first thing I wanna take issue with, with the staff presentation here. About what was, what was approved at the meeting regarding financial reporting. It states here that, you know, February the twenty-fourth, the director staff to present a new financial reporting format on a bimonthly basis, along with presenting the old financial reporting format on alternate months. That wasn't what was, what was voted on. What was voted on was that we do a bimonthly report, financial reporting in a new format. That's what, that's what the minutes say. Yeah, so, and so, looking at that, when we did that, in my going through, you know, getting familiarized with the municipal code and with other budget issues and things at the city, what I found is that in our municipal code, the director of finance is, is tasked with providing a monthly financial report to the council. And also, the council in its own budget, they had in its own budget, one of their goals was to have a monthly financial report. Then I said, well, this, this vote is inconsistent with what the council has already decided, what previous council has decided, that the director of finances' position, responsibilities are, and what your own budget goals were for this year. So either you change your goals in your, your municipal code, or you change the report to a monthly one.
Well, the goals are, goals are just goals, they're not, um...
Well, goals are just goals, I mean, if you have a goal, and then you, you, I say you can change your goal, say you wanna do it, do it up...
What, in the end, what is it that you want? To simplify it?
I, I want them to, to both say the same, you either change the financial report to a monthly, or you change the municipal code and your goals to a bimonthly.
Wait, municipal code, you're talking three different things, municipal code...
Municipal code.
And goals.
And your goal.
Goals are arbitrary, I mean, we may make our goals, we may not make our goals, so I'm not gonna change, we don't need to change the wording of our goals, that's arbitrary. If you wanna change a municipal code, we can bring that back and put that on the agenda item.
I wanna change the, the reporting, I don't wanna change the municipal code, I want you to, I want you to be in compliance with the municipal code.
You're the one bringing it up, so you...
Well, that's, that's what I want. And I wanna take issue here, too, with, says the physical impact, spending of staff, approximately three-hundred dollars a month for preparation of new financial reporting format, makes no sense to me now. You said in the beginning that you were gonna do the new report one month, old report the next month, now it's gonna cost you three-hundred dollars a month just to do the new report each month.
Absolutely.
It takes that amount of staff time to prepare?
Prepare, you were gonna do, you're gonna do, you said, the council directed you to do a, a new report on one month, and old report the next month. That's what it says here, so you, so you're gonna do a report every month.
Let me rewind.
Wait, where am I?
What, what had happened is, city council voted in February to switch to Councilman Nelson's new format.
Yeah.
Bimonthly.
Right.
We talked about every four months, every quarter, monthly.
No, but what we said was bimonthly.
Yes, we finished on bimonthly. Michelle and I still provided you the monthly financial report in the old format, so we're still providing you a monthly financial report and in compliance with the municipal code. What I think you have issue with is the two different formats, and you want a monthly report in the new format, if I'm following.
We're still getting the financial report.
First off, it just makes more sense for, to have a monthly report in one format. It would seem to me to cost more to have it done in two formats.
Absolutely not.
The original format is a lot more condensed, just has general, your, your fund numbers as opposed to line items. It's a lot easier to do eleven funds than a hundred-and-sixty line items.
Yeah, and, and three-hundred, that costs three-hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, absolutely, in staff time.
Look, I've had enough financial experience to know that, that can't possibly be true, either that, or you're totally inefficient.
Okay.
That, in my opinion.
Sure.
So I, I know better than that.
It'll get better the more you prepare the report, but it's a new report, you have to get used to it.
But anyway, my point is that you need to be consistent.
So, where are we on the...
They're just bringing it to our attention?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I think you should, I think you should change it to a monthly report.
I think we're fine.
I frankly don't think it's worth it, I don't even care about the monthly, you know, I, I was happy, I was happy with a quarterly, frankly, on it.
So was I.
It just, I just don't think we, we need all that.
I think we compromised, remember?
The council, you know...
We compromised every other month.
Yeah, our finance director sees it every month, signs checks, and so, I just, I just, we're so small, I don't think we need it, if it was LA, I'd be, I'd be all over this.
We're still saving money every year, right?
Not at Villa Park, to me, it's a cost-return trade-off.
I was saving money.
Well, we are putting money away.
We put money away.
Oh.
Because we're putting money in the piggy.
All right.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on this?
So then I'll come back at the next meeting with the code adjust for a code amendment.
He didn't wanna change the code.
He just wanted to...
No, he didn't wanna, he's, I asked him, he said he didn't wanna change the code.
He didn't wanna change the code.
Yeah, I don't wanna change the code.
Two reports.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's being brought to our attention, Jared.
I mean, I propose we leave it the way it is, subject to that bimonthly report that Bill wants modified.
All right, okay, so, next.
But let me, let me, let me ask the council this, do you guys want different reports each month? You want one on the old format one month, one on the new format? I thought what we put, I thought what that vote meant was we were gonna get one report on a bimonthly basis, not two different reports.
I think what Jared's saying is that the old report's almost automatic.
The other one's a gimme, they're saying it spits out automatically, so I don't...
We voted on yours every other month, that's correct.
I don't even need the new report, frankly, but...
But we did, but we voted on it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's fine.
So, that's just fine. So, why don't we just leave it?
It's fine, we got best of both.
The old one fulfills that requirement.
Now, let's just leave it.
The new one is more information.
Exactly.
Okay.
We're not going against the code.
So do we need a motion on that, or not?
No, I'll, I'll let it go.
I have a question, because I am confused, I'm getting way confused.
Can we, can we, wanna do it on your, okay, tell you what, hold on a second, let's, we're going to move on, and you speak first for councilperson.
Okay, it might be, it might be an agenda item that I've missed, I'm so confused now, I can't even remember. There was an item on here, there was, there was a, there was modifications to the Investment Advisory Committee, was that, is that totally separate?
Separation.
Okay, never mind, I'm done.
That's later.
I thought I saw it in this packet, but I didn't see it when I flipped through it, so never mind, okay. All right, well, I'm done.
All right, you wanna start, Rick?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I attended a fire authority meeting, we dealt with, we dealt with a, some labor agreement issues in closed session, I don't think there was any real action taken there, and we had dealt with that, that Senate bill that we just addressed here, and I already explained what happened, and that's it for me.
All right, Councilman Colacott?
Let's see, I attended the local, or the law enforcement advisory committee meeting, and they are continuing to work on development of the law enforcement report. We're anticipating that we'll have a report out to the city council next month.
All right, Councilman Nelson?
Uh, I would like an agenda item for the mayor's agenda to change the June council meeting from twenty-third to the thirtieth. And the reason is that Councilman Colacott and I are attending League of California Cities Training Session that starts on the twenty-fourth of June. And the reason is that Councilman Colacott and I are attending League of California Cities Training Session that starts on the twenty-fourth of June. And if we got out of here like at twelve o'clock.
We do.
We would have a tough time getting up to Monterey at the next morning.
I don't know if we can do it. It's not, not agendized, is it?
It's not agendized.
I want to put it on the May agenda to change the June meeting. I'm not saying to change it. Now I'm saying I want a May.
Do we need to, do we need to agendize it? All right, what would be the, that's appropriate?
It's, it's appropriate to agendize it if the council wants to weigh in on it.
But going, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you that that doesn't work for me, um, to do it. I kinda, I booked the whole year based on when the, when the council is, and you took, you weren't here one time, and you, you just weren't here. You went on vacation.
What was the, yeah, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean, you went on vacation, and you told us.
We still have a.
We still have, we still have, we have a forum with three people. We did it without you.
Yeah.
I, I guess, I mean, what I would like to do, so you could go to Monterey, is to just get this meeting overdone earlier. I mean, can we, can we adjust the agenda so that it, it's reasonable?
Well, I mean, what other day, maybe some other day would work for you.
Council, if I could jump in, this, this is why we should agendize it, so we can have a substantive discussion on it, since it hasn't been agendized for this meeting.
All right, perfect, and we have a month. All right, sounds good.
We'll get you and Greg.
But, but, okay, no.
Go ahead, talk it. One else does.
Let's get out of here before midnight. We only got six.
Well, he's got something to say.
I want to, administrative committee meeting at the sanitation district, and other issues were discussed. Basically, moving the general manager's purview over the amount of money he can sign for. That was a big deal there for the General Board of the Orange County Senate District. The other deal was that there was a contract approved for the operating engineers. The cities of La Palma, Villa Park and Orange voted against it because there's no provision for any of the employees to contribute to their own pensions. That's still the case at sanitation district, yeah.
They still pay their.
They pay everything.
They pay the employees.
But they're starting to move some of it. That's what they're working on, and we had, we had other openers that, for other items for the other three bargaining units there. I also went to the vector control. I went to two meetings there. I went to another meeting for the building committee, and I was elected chairman of that committee, which meets maybe three times a year, and then find out they had me on the wrong committee. It had been changed.
Oh.
So there'll be some adjustment next month while I'll report on. So that's the way things go sometimes. We'll have to straighten it out in the long run. And we went to the Valor, uh, meeting last week at the, on Thursday, at the Irvine Hotel for the sheriff, which was very nice.
Yeah, that was attended by.
You know what? That was done so much more quickly than the one last year. That was very good, the way they did that, so. But I think Mr. Arnold was tired of the same speech at the end, so, anyway.
Okay, um, I went to, let's see, I think two or three Serrano Water Board meetings this month. They obviously have some big things on their agenda, and they're gonna be coming our way very soon. I'll keep you up to date when something comes through. Went to Saravilla, the invited, this district invited the dignitaries to come in. They opened up a new STEM lab, which was, has to do with science and technology, and it was a very nice ceremony, beautiful room. And they're opening up one at Villa Park High School, and I was proud to have been invited there and to represent the city at that particular event. Went to a DUI forum on Friday, which was very informative, and it was very nice. Got a lot of information on safety, and I believe we'll be having a seminar come up for our residents talking about drunk driving, drunk driving with prescription drugs and so on, but I got a lot of information. I'll be talking to the sheriff about doing something like that. Also met with the Orange County Board of the Red Cross. They came in to advise us about what they do. It's not just about blood, you know, collection. And we are planning on having an earthquake seminar, which I, my meeting with them was prior to the Nepal earthquake. It just happened to work out that way, but gonna go ahead and have one of those scheduled also for the benefit of the community. And I also went Saturday morning to the unveiling of the crime, not the crime, the victim monument in Irvine. And it was very moving, very nice. I was glad to be a part of it and look forward to that being built. And other than that, that's it. Staff, anything we should know? That we don't know?
It's still, it's still the twenty-eighth.
The city's admin analyst started this week, Kim Chandra. Nice, cool time, tremendous amount of experience coming from the city of Lakewood Analyst Ministry. We are, I am very happy to have her, and it's really, so it's been nice to get another full-time by.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Anything else?
I didn't wanna scare her away tonight, so we, we let her go home after five o'clock.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Thank you, then we are adjourned until our next scheduled council meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. It's late.
It's late.